All right, you're on muted.
We'll bring the meeting to order. Welcome to the October fourteenth Board of Commissioners meeting. If we could have roll call, please.
Do not?
Here.
Marky?
Here.
Nye?
Present.
Roloff?
Here.
Sauer?
Here.
Frigg is excused.
All right, Gary, you'll be with? I'm gonna ask for a personal, I should ask him before, is it okay to do a moment of silence for Roger Griner?
Absolutely.
You know, all your heads and and thank, thank Roger for all the down in this community. I just like a moment of silence for him. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Gracious God, as we come before you today to discuss important matters, I ask for your guidance and wisdom. Help us to focus on our community and be thankful for all our blessings. Amen, I pray.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've had the agenda in advance of the meeting. Any additions or changes? If not, entertain a motion.
Now I move to approve the agenda as presented.
It's our seconds. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Again, you had the minutes of September twenty-third in advance. Any comments or questions on that? If not, entertain a motion. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Gary.
Mark, you will support.
Thank you. If you're ready for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? All right, we're at the first public input.
At the microphone, sir. Thank you.
If you would, state your name and address, please.
My name is Bud Frankenberger. I live at twenty-one thirty-one South Shore Drive in Crystal Lake Township. And I'm here to comment on the emergency medical services in Benzy County. Three weeks and two days ago this evening, my domestic partner, Madeline Maury, fell in the bathroom and struck her head. When I got to her, she was bleeding pretty badly and I was able to staunch the, the blood from, from her head and moved her to a bed and called my son, thinking that she might have a concussion and we might want to transport her to Paul Oliver. By the time he got there, her condition had deteriorated some and we realized that we needed to call EMS. They arrived fairly shortly. And I had no idea at the time that she was within hours of dying. But because of their protocols, they were able to assess the seriousness of her condition, moved her from the bed to the ambulance, prepped her there. I went on to the hospital and because they had some work to do in the ambulance. When they arrived at the emergency room because they had been in contact with the ER, she was admitted as a high priority trauma patient. In only a few minutes, the ER doctor came to me to say that she needed emergency neurological surgery and asked my permission, since I am her healthcare power of attorney, to use extraordinary measures if she began to fail on the operating table. Sorry, I'm pretty good about this, except when I talk it through. She did have emergency surgery. The, her skull was opened. The bleeding in her brain was relieved. She had a port at the back of her skull for several days. I am happy to report to you that she is doing fine now. We are a little over three weeks out. She's regained her balance. She's walking well. And I simply want to say thanks to this commission for having the foresight to have a first quality EMS program in this county. Those of us who love Benzy County, love its rural nature, but it is excellent to have such quick transportation to a major hospital setting. In the exit interview with the neurosurgeon, I thanked him for saving her life also. And he said, it's just my job. And in talking to Tom King and getting his take on on the EMTs and paramedics who attended to her, that's their attitude also is that, that's what we do. That's our job. For us, my family, Madeline's family, all of us who love her, they're heroes. Heroes who are doing a job extraordinarily well, and I simply want to express my gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate your comments and we're glad that things are recovering. Any other public input?
Good morning. Got a little funny coming up here after that story. That's an amazing story and makes me happy to be living here in Benzy County. Glad we have such services here in addition to the beautiful country or county.
Do you state your name?
My name is Taj Juckter. You just approved the minutes from the twenty-third. I was here for that meeting talking about the Crystal Lake Outlet Project. Some concerns were expressed about whether enough public input had been gathered. And we put our hopes behind a public hearing, which occurred last Thursday at one o'clock. I was there. And I have to say, I was extraordinarily disappointed in that meeting. It was a hearing in name only. There wasn't really any listening. There wasn't exchange of ideas. I came, you know, in the spirit of cooperation, I was characterized last time as maybe being the opposition. I don't want to be the opposition. I want to be a partner with the people doing this development. Spent a lot of time talking to Ed and Sean. And I came to the meeting honestly prepared to talk about some of the key issues around the design of that development. The parking lot size and location will have a huge impact on the maintenance burden that this county will have, and that's not been discussed. I think the reroute of the Betsy Valley Trail and the expert riders that I know is going to be actively more dangerous than what's there now. There's a lot of other details where the Mobi mat is going to go will have a huge impact on ongoing maintenance. Boat wash solutions. I wanted to talk about all these details, but instead what happened is we got a master class in political manipulation. The room was stacked with people recruited to come in and blindly pledge support. It was obvious that a lot of them didn't even know a lot of the details about it, but they came in and it seemed like they were handed a script that said, Parks and Rec has worked on this for a long time. They have a good plan. I support the plan. We should go ahead. Not one single person talked about any specifics about the plan or the fact that there might be other ways to do this. We just went through the charade and people were shut down, no questions asked, no questions answered. Nobody was allowed to, to say anything. So I was very disappointed in that and going forward, you know, the, the plan is going to go through basically as is, and if it comes to this group for approval, I would like to honestly ask, I think Bob, you suggested it, if, if we're going to have the people working on it, give their presentation. Instead of three minutes to try to go through all of the details to think about, I'd like to be on the agenda and I have an engineering background. I'd like to talk about what I see in the plan, and I know you guys are very concerned with ongoing maintenance cost. The decisions we're making now will have a huge impact on that. So thank you very much. We got recognized a few times for being so engaged in the community. But honestly, people like me who are bringing thoughtful input to the process are treated like this, that will stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
Hello, Mary Juckter. And I was also here for the meeting and I just wanted to address
What was your first name?
Mary.
Mary, thank you.
I just wanted to address the movement of the trail for this. Like Taj said, I actually rode it two days ago and it's impossible to negotiate it the way they have it. You're going to have injuries. Some could be possibly really bad injuries. The River Road does not meet that same angle. The River Road, which is much busier at that trail. So I think them saying that it has to be that way is not true. So I'd like to discuss more about the trail movement. The proposal would not, the proposal with the parking lot where it is, would avoid all that altogether. The other thing was with the public comment with some of the people that were up here last time and they condescendingly looked over and kind of mockingly addressed when I brought up the bald eagles possibly nesting in that outlet area and other birds. But I would have liked to have said to the guy, I wonder what the courts would think about that. He didn't know anything about it. He just said they can go somewhere else. So there, there was a lot that, like Taj said, I think should be discussed in detail. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input? If not, we'll close public input and we'll go to elected officials and department head. Please come forward. Brooke, go ahead. Pass a coin.
Hi, my name's Jim Frankie. I'm with Poundsville EMS and I just wanted to open up some discussion about this rate increase for intercept agreements. I'm kind of shocked when I saw the dollar amount that was placed in here because right now we have four agreements in place with a fifth one being worked on. And four of those five agreements, two fifty is the going rate. The fifth one, the rate was three hundred and that was with Blair and they only did that because they were trying to help us out when, for a few years back when situation in Manistee was going on with who was running the ambulance service or whatever. So they told us the higher rate, but they don't want us to call them. But they were doing it as a favor for us to make sure we had enough coverage for ALS. So I had given everybody the sheet with the rates. These are, so our area over there, probably ninety-five percent of everybody is on Medicare or Medicaid. And that's what the going rate is. So if we had to pay five hundred dollars, you know, there's no way we would survive or would be able to continue on with ALS agreement. So basically about it. I don't know if anybody has any questions. The rates were are from the billing company who got them off the Medicare Medicaid website. And the billing company we use is also the same one that Benzy uses. So you're more than free to verify the the rate structure.
Can I ask a question, Chair?
Absolutely.
What percentage is Medicaid as opposed to private insurance on your calls? Do you know that?
Ninety-five percent.
Ninety-five percent? And do you know the, what the private insurance pays out for these calls?
Um, they're closer to the eight, nine hundred dollars. I'd have to look them up because everyone
Sure, it's different, yeah.
You know, like I said, I just printed these ones because that's who ninety-five percent of our payers are.
And how much do you get for Medicaid?
It's on that sheet.
Oh, this is it? Okay.
Yeah. And I said, and I wasn't trying to confuse it. So you know that there's, where we fall is considered a rural rate. So it's a little higher than if you're in the city. The mileage, no matter where it is, is always the same. So when I just use, you know, from our area over there, it's approximately thirty miles a month. So I just used the thirty mile rate at their mileage rate to show you what, if all works well, that what we should collect barring any situations, because it's just like doctor's insurance. There's all kinds of Medicare. There's all kinds of supplemental. There's all kinds of advantage. Sometimes they're deductible. Sometimes there's not. And sometimes it's hard to collect. There's a deductible to collect. I mean, we're still trying to collect stuff from three, four years ago.
Chair, could I?
Please.
So I just want to understand you, right? When you say mileage rate is always the same, it's, but it's still per mile. It's not just, it's not based on per trip?
It's per mile. Okay, we'll use this word loaded mile from where you pick the patient up to where you transport them.
Okay, I just want to make sure we aren't being paid the same rate in a rural area as we are in an urban area because we have longer trips to make.
No, what I meant about the mileage rate, it doesn't matter which one of the situations it falls underneath.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Mileage is always the same.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay.
Other questions for Jim? Jim, do you have a mileage that supports your?
No, we do not. We survive off of what we collect.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Nope, I just wanted to bring that to your attention before we got too far along in the process.
I know there'll be some discussions. This has not been brought before the board yet, but we'll anticipate it. We'll take your comments to heart. And my guess is, is that administration will probably be having a conversation with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Good morning, Brooke. Springfield Airport. So this report is much the same as when I spoke last month. We still are working on hangar electrical meter consolidation obstruction removal. That is going to start October twenty-fifth. So we'll soon be doing that. The board did approve a cost of a hundred thousand dollars for removing the trees. And as you can see in the financial statements, we did get a, an anonymous donation of eighty-five thousand dollars towards that. So that really helps a lot. Yeah. And at the last meeting, there was a discussion about one of the property owners and that misunderstanding with that landowner has been resolved. There was not a clear understanding of the rights that an airport has when there is a navigation easement. Plus, there was some confusion with MDOT's recommendations for township zoning. So I think we cleared that up and we're moving forward. Uh, let's see, so runway thirty-three light modifications. When MDOT did their inspection last year, it was determined that we have some lights at the end of the runway that are not in FAA compliance. So to become unprovisional, we need to, we need to move some lights, add some new ones. And that needs to be complete. It's a twenty-four thousand dollar job. It needs to be complete by next summer. MDOT is going to come back in next summer and do another lighter survey. So we've had tree removal at the thirty-three end. Right now we're working with fifteen end. They're going to come in and do a survey and see what obstruction still remain. And then hopefully by then we can become unprovisional, have it just a general license. One of the new projects at the airport is we are looking for a new courtesy car. Ours is, it had some engine issues. To repair the vehicles, where it's more than what the vehicles were. So we're out there looking. If anyone knows of anything, we did go to the website that was suggested to us. I think it was mybuy.com. But we are a public charity. So if anyone would like to donate their vehicle, it's a tax action. Let's see here. So, and to offset the costs, so the board came up with a five thousand other figure for a new vehicle. And to offset that cost, we're looking at after hours fees. Other airports charge these fees. It's usually for air taxi services. So let's say NetJet comes in, they've got two pilots, four passengers. The passengers get shuttled away to where they're going and then there's the two pilots. What they've been doing is staying overnight at a local facility and utilizing the area. They've become visitors. They're not just pilots. They're staying overnight, having dinner, maybe a round of golf and then returning to the airport at six AM. So we're trying to, we're going to come up with after hours fees to help offset the use of the vehicle. Any question?
Questions for Brooke? Gary, please. The boy that kind of fucked up, pays the insurance on this car.
Uh, the airport. Courtesy cars are very common at all airports. A lot of, like this morning, I was at the office and at the terminal, a young couple came in from Traverse City. They wanted to go to breakfast. It's usually called the hundred dollar hamburger because people will fly in, they'll go down to A and W or whatnot, have lunch or a meal and then be on their way back where they're going. But so the courtesy car gets a lot of use. A lot of use.
Taxi, the plane to the end.
No.
Anyway, just curious. Other questions or comments? Brooke, you had said you suggested something like you were a non-for-profit.
Yeah, right.
What's your IRS designation?
It's a five oh nine and I don't know the sections. And then we are also a one seventy. So because we are a government entity that receives the majority of their revenue from other sources like grants and whatnot and, and donations. So we are actually designated a public charity.
And you're telling me that, that money's donated, like the sixty-five thousand is a charitable contribution, could be deducted?
Yes.
But yet you're a public entity.
Right.
Serious.
Yes.
I do have one question. I did see in an email chain and I want to address it here just to have the conversation out in the open. Why is the Benzy bus not an option? We do have transportation options here.
They are an option and they've been utilized. They've often been utilized. It's convenience. For instance, I was there, a couple of guys came in. They wanted lunch. They did wait thirty-five, forty minutes to get to, to get to the Benzy bus and then to go into town. So there is that convenience factor. They, if the crew car had been there, they'd just hop in and and be back by the time the bus got there.
Right. We appreciate the report.
Yes, welcome. Thank you.
Tammy, is there a problem if we file this under, pardon me?
Department head?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll, we'll file yours under department head. Dan?
Hey, good morning, Commissioners. Dan Thorell, Health Officer for Benzy Linnell District Health Department. And I kind of understand why someone would fly from Traverse City to come here because US thirty-one is a nightmare. So might be worth it. Might need to get their names. I just wanted to, you know, give a brief update. I originally was planning on coming here to talk about the marijuana oversight and operation. Granted, I appreciate the fact that that was taken care of at the last meeting. But also just wanted to tell you about, you know, what happened over the year with that. We were distributing, we have our Secure Your Stash campaign, which is on our website and we talk about, you know, the harmful effects that marijuana could have if someone got into it unintentionally, especially children, pets and whatnot. Marijuana is much, much more potent and strong compared to what it used to be. And this is, you know, whether you agree with this or not, it's here, right? We have recreational use. We have dispensaries. And so really our focus is on just preventing those unintentional uses of marijuana, so to speak. So as we all know, Uh, the, you know, the gummies look like candy. I mean, you can see how it would be attractive for a kid if they came across that to, to eat those and. Um, that is, you know, something that we're very concerned about. We distributed four hundred and fifty uh, lock bags uh, to folks. Uh, so they could put that material in there and, and lock it up so small children can't get into it. It also has uh, you know, an unintended advantage of uh, for our senior citizens that want to lock up medications. So uh, if they happen to have painkillers or whatnot, it's just a good way to secure that, that uh, material. So. We also uh, initially, we were planning on doing a couple billboards, uh, maybe a bus wrap. But we actually ended up partnering or not partnering, but hiring uh, Up North Live Media. To produce a uh, short video which was distributed out via social media. Um, so we were able to do that using the funds from both Benzie and Leonau County. Um, that was, you know, successful. We got a lot of hits on that. Um, I believe over eight thousand. Uh, the content has been made, so I think this coming up through this next year, what we plan to do is just run it longer. So we can get more, you know, more coverage, more exposure. I think it only ran for a month, uh, the month of July, but we did get a lot of. Lot of hits on it. So I think it's been, you know, a successful program. Um, you know, the lock bags have just been. We were constantly getting called from our area partners that they needed more, 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 more. So we're gonna. Purchase more going into this next year and, and continue to distribute those. But I don't know if you have any questions about that. I will say too, that the uh, funding for this next year went up almost two thousand dollars for Benzie County. And this is all based on uh, like the marijuana, marijuana, medical marijuana cards. And how many people get those? That's what all this funding is based on. Uh, the, the grants coming back from the state. So. Um, so it went up two thousand here and it went up, went down two thousand in Leonau. So we're about the same, but. But if anybody has any questions specifically about that.
I just wanted to thank you for. Making that available to seniors because there's a lot of opioids and stuff that are, that are a concern and. I'd just like to be able to promote that a little more.
Right. Yeah, no, thank you. Um, and you know, if you happen to see our report, we don't mention. We don't mention that because it's supposed to be about marijuana, right? So um, hope nobody's watching from CRA, but. Um, anyways. Uh, I just also wanted to just kind of give you a brief update about our, our budget at the Health Department. Um, it was a very busy and long budgeting season. It seems like uh. We started it in April, um, when we were handed down some cuts from the federal government and we had to figure things out. And whatnot. Um, I will say just to give you some numbers. Um, compared to last, last year, last fiscal year. Our revenue is down um, almost eighteen percent. And part of that is we did have some infrastructure funding, um, that we were able to do some. Uh, renovation at the Benzii building. Um, in our lower level, our environmental health and administrative space was renovated over the winter. And we moved into that in early July. Um, so that is in there. It's, that was about uh, three hundred and fifty thousand of that. Um, so it's not. You know, quite all programmatic, but still it's about revenue is down about one point five million. Um, out of our, you know, seven and a half million dollar budget. So. Um. This year, we're using about three hundred and sixty-eight thousand of fund balance to balance our budget. We do have a healthy fund balance, so we felt that that was appropriate going into this next year. Um, a couple other numbers are uh, you know, our healthcare costs for employees have gone up about nineteen percent. I know that you're dealing with a lot of the same issues with employee healthcare. Um, I don't know how that is sustainable going forward if that just continues to happen every year. I mean, it's, it's just, you know, it's very concerning to me. Um. Our staffing, uh, we're fortunate that we had a lot of positions that were open due to attrition. We had some people retire. Uh, we have some, uh, a couple people that left. Um, we have an upcoming retirement in uh, December. One of our longtime employees, Deb Aldridge, I know a lot of you know her, is retiring. But we are essentially down uh, with all the, with Deb's position, about six point two FTEs, which is about twelve percent of our staffing. So we're essentially shrinking, you know, based on uh, some of the, the funding that we were receiving. We're, we're decreased in the amount of funding revenue. But we're also shrinking the staff, so we're trying to right-size that. Um, we did have to do a reorganization. Uh, and we had to lay off one staff member. We reorganized our uh, Public uh, Information Officer position and Emergency Preparedness. Position. So our current uh, Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, uh, Sue Sparkman was, was laid off unfortunately. Um, she is, you know, exemplary employee, great employee, you know, it was not, it was just a, you know, a tough decision, but. We had to, we had to make that decision to kind of. Right-size our budget, you know, going forward and, you know, hoping that we don't have to do any more of that. Um, but you know, there's still a lot of unknowns out there. Um, some of the Medicaid uh, changes and whatnot, we don't know really how that's going to affect us. Um, you know, going throughout this year. I don't think it's going to have a huge effect because it doesn't seem to uh, really affect the families, um. Young mom, single parents with kids, which is a lot of our clients. Um, so you know, we'll see what happens there. Um. So I guess, you know, right now, we're. We, we are down that amount, amount in staffing, but it doesn't seem like our workload has decreased. So I mean, we're stretched very thin. Um, we, we've also in environmental health, we are extremely busy. Uh, our current software program was sunsetted. Uh, we were made aware last spring. So we had to come up with a new software program. Fortunately, we had been working on that. And we went live with that uh, October first. So over time. It'll be a better software program, but it has slowed things down just because of the learning curve a little bit. So we're, we're working through those issues. Um. We are planning uh, a holiday closure to the public, uh, the days between Christmas and New Year, and that was board approved. And that was uh, the reason we did that is because we're traditionally slow during that period anyways. And we are staffed so thin in our personal health division that it was just an opportunity to give those folks a break. Um, because it's just very difficult to staff during that time period anyways because people want to take time off. So. That's all I have. Uh, if anybody has any questions?
What has been your reactive approach to the insurance increase of nineteen percent? Are you just absorbing it at this point? Or have you definitively looked at different providers or cost sharing? What are you doing in response to that?
Yeah, it's a good question. Um, we did ask our uh, provider, uh, consultant, healthcare consultant advantage benefits. Uh, to get other bids and they did. Uh, those other bids were higher. And this is our, the nineteen percent increases with our existing Blue Care Network Insurance. Um, so we were hoping that, you know, by getting those other bids that we would find something that was, you know, a little bit more competitive, a little bit lower. Uh, but that didn't happen. So um. Yeah, so for right now, we are, as part of this budget, absorbing that. We didn't feel like uh, with. The changes that we've had in staffing, um, to, to put more on the employees. I mean, of course, the employees have to. Pay more because they're paying fifteen percent of their premium. And so the premium goes up nineteen percent. They are paying a slice of that. Um, but we didn't change anything. Uh, most of our employees are, uh, we have an option between being on um, uh. The high deductible plan or the traditional. And most of them are on, on the high deductible where we fund some of that towards their, you know, maximum deductible. So.
But you do have an eighty-five fifteen cost share?
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Also have an HSA, I never get it straight.
That's a high deductible, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, and honestly, we get a lot, a lot of good, I mean, there was a lot of. Angst about that in the beginning when that first came on board, but people are happy with that because. You know, if you're not, if you don't use it, you're building up a really nice account of. Funds for when you do need it down the road, so.
Yeah, because that follows you.
It does. Yeah, it follows you. And if you are. You know, and it, it kind of makes you really think about like, do I really need to go to the. See my doctor for a sniffle, right? Like, and then part of the Blue Care Network too, they have a telehealth option, which is cheap. It's like forty dollars. And so if you have something that's just very, like an earache or something like that, you can. Uh, get online, talk to a doctor and they can send in a prescription if it's pretty obvious. What it is. It could be like, you know, something like pink eye or, you know, an earache where you might have an ear infection. Doesn't always work for everything because they might say, you know, well, you really need to go in and see somebody, but for those routine things. It saves the cost of that office visit, so.
Do you have one more? That's okay.
Go ahead.
Is there still conversation about the mandatory septic evaluation that was being discussed? So.
Oh, at the state level?
Yeah, at the state level.
Yeah, there actually is. Um, that legislation has not been introduced on the Senate side. Senator Singh out of Lansing has, you know, still been moving that forward. There's been a lot of, a lot of changes with it. Uh, but essentially it's in its current format. Um, I think it was, there's a lot of uh. Uh, triggers that would trigger an evaluation, like a place that is close to the water or. Um, you know, has never had a, you know, a septic permit on file, things like that. And then at, once that's done, then it would be every ten years. That's kind of the, the main parts of that. Um. But it's, you know, I don't see that going anywhere, honestly. Um, it hasn't even, they have not even introduced it. And, but we've, you know, I've been involved in meetings, you know, a couple of meetings throughout the summer, uh, one back in September. But it still has not even been introduced. I mean, there's been. You know, way bigger things going on as far as, you know, like getting a budget passed.
Sure, and both Benzie and Leonau County have point of sale evaluation. So we're in pretty good shape.
We are in good shape, yeah. And I think, you know, we do a great job with that. It's been at Benzie County since nineteen ninety-two. So I mean, we've, we are reaping the benefits of having a program that long because we have a very low. Rate of having issues, you know, when we do those evaluations because they've already been done. And things have been addressed, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Thanks for the question. Any other comments or questions? Then I would ask two questions, Dan, unrelated. Your um, septic and water inspections, the time a request is made till they can actually get out there, how much time passes, you know?
Well, I mean, are you talking about the evaluations for the time of sale?
New homes, uh, homes being purchased and.
Okay, so evaluations. Um. It typically, it, it varies throughout the year. Um, we have had one of our, one of our busiest years in those programs. Um, for what, whatever, I mean, it's just busy. People. Coming here, moving here, uh, just a lot of transactions going on. So I'm hearing from our, you know, we kind of keep an eye on that, um, that we're lots of times during the summer, during the busy parts of the year, three to four weeks out. On getting those done. And a lot of it, we always tell um, you know, our realtors and homeowners that come in is like. As soon as you think you are putting that house on the market, get the paperwork in. Because what happens sometimes is, you know, they'll put it on the market, not, not get any of this stuff done, and then they have an offer, right? And you know, they want to get this done before it closes and there's just, if they say they want to close in like two weeks and they don't, they haven't even started. Process yet. I mean, it's. You know, it's not going to happen, right? We need, we need more time than that. Um, and it's really driven just by the numbers, by the, you know, the amount that's going on out there.
You make a good point. You don't have to wait till there's a pending sale. They can, as soon as they've decided to sell it. The inspection's good, you know, for an indefinite period of time, so.
Right, it's good for a while, so, yep.
And does the agency contribute to any of that HSA?
Yes, um. I believe it is, it's either twenty-four hundred or twenty-six hundred dollars um, towards the employee HSA. And I think the, the uh, deductible, and this is for like a family, is four thousand.
Okay.
Okay. And there's different deductibles in there. Um, but that's the main one. So essentially you can, and an employee can have money, which I do, right? Because I have three. Boys that are, you know, early twenties of teenagers and there's always something going on, right? So. Um, I never have money in HSA, but I uh, during my, out of my paycheck every. Every couple of weeks, I have money taken out that's put into it on top of what the agency puts in.
Sure, and there's a maximum amount that could be contributed, right?
Yeah, I think between what the agency puts in and what the employee puts in, it's about eight thousand dollars, somewhere in there, give or take.
Okay.
A year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Dan, thanks for taking the time to be here today.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Tom, did you want to make a report?
Nope. Thanks.
On in this afternoon.
Thanks for your patience.
Yeah, no problem. Tom King, EMS doctor, Benzie County EMS. I really just wanted to ride kind of on the coattails of Mr. Frankenberger in his comments. And I had talked to him over the last couple of weeks and um. Encouraged him to come and uh, say what he had to say. I think you guys um, hear a lot of the. Difficult aspects of running a countywide ambulance service. You don't always get to hear the positive aspect. Of how it truly benefits the community and the people. I think Mr. Frankenberger gave a great example of the impact. That our ambulance services has throughout our community. And it's not just us. It's Thompsonville, it's Elmira, it's our fire departments, it's our, our law enforcements. Everybody. And a lot of times in these meetings, we don't hear the. Good impact that we have within our community. It's out there and it's said, but it's. People talk to their families, talking to their neighbors, talking to their friends, and it doesn't always make its way back. You go to township meetings, you'll probably hear a little here and there. But, you know, we get periodically, I'll get uh, messages or a card in the mail that's. To accrue for something, hey, thank you for what you did or something. And this was something I wanted to do that was a little different. Not give a great big presentation, but I did invite Calvin and Ryan to be here, that I was going to have this, that Mr. Frankenberger was going to talk so. They could hear what he had to say because they don't always get that positive feedback either. So I think this is good for them. To hear that, you know, what you do and what you train for. And, and he really hit the nail on the head. It's unfortunately a thankless job. We train and are educated in what we do. We take it more for granted because we do. What was done every day and you don't always see. The aftereffect or the global impact that it has on people. And if we can see more of that on a regular basis, I think will. Helps make decisions, helps us keep us moving forward and it keeps uh, our staff motivated all the way around. Anything else I have to say would be appropriate during the appropriate times.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Any other department head reports?
Uh, Megan Garza, Administrator at the Maples. Um, just wanted to bring you a September update. Um, we ended the month with a census of ninety-nine point three percent. Um, with eleven admits over the month. Seventy-six referrals, forty-seven were from Benzie County. Um, we're sitting right around a hundred and sixty employees. I think that's the gist of things. Questions? Sure.
He had a phone call from a lady who was helping a vet. And I know you're limited as to how many you can take in. Guessing he was a Benzii vet. Did it to Bob or no? And I suggested because he's in a predicament right now where he's at, they're gonna.
Excuse me, Gary, can you lean into that microphone?
Yeah, afraid so. Anyway, they're going to uh. Uh, take him out of where he's at. And he couldn't get into the Maples and I'm guessing because you were following up.
Well.
Then I suggested that he get a hold of the Veterans Affairs Office and see if there's anything they can help. I hate to see a vet not covered any way we can, but uh.
I totally agree. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're bursting at the seams. We're turning away people, multiple people a day. I think when I first got put in this position, it was. Um, really nice being, I'm born and raised in this community, so I felt like I was really helping my community members, but it's a double edged sword because now I'm telling. My, my friends' grandparents, I can't, like, you're on a waiting list and you're number twenty-five. I'm telling our teachers, my retired teachers, I'm sorry, you're number twenty-four on a waitlist. It will be six months to a year before I, you'll get in here. So it's really hard. It's a struggle, but we're tight. Everybody that we're admitting is from Benzie County. Um, we're doing our best. We're discharging in the morning and admitting two hours later. Um, we're flipping those rooms to get somebody right in. Um, people are like, rehabbers are going to facilities in Traverse City and then we're keeping in touch with them. So as soon as we can get them into the Maples, we are because. We have a lot of people. because we have a lot of people that rely on Benzy bus for transportation right now, so that means not seeing their loved one unless they can get a ride to Travers. So, yeah, it's, we're struggling with the fact that we are bursting at the seams.
So Megan, is there options that you try to give to these families for other places?
Yeah, we definitely, so I've been working with people, um, trying to get them with the Medicaid waiver program so that they can at least, um, reap some services from Benzy Senior Resources. Um, we keep in touch with the three assisted livings in the community, so, um, you know, we're constantly, I'm constantly talking to everybody at the Pines, the Homesteaders, at, um, Frankfurt Senior Care, trying to give them as options. Um, I call it my community service, because I'm just sitting on the phone, I'm like, here's this option, here's this option, call this person, call this person, but it, it's true, it's hard.
Appreciate what you're doing, it's just very difficult to help these folks.
I, I totally agree.
Thank you. Megan, I would say that what you're experiencing kind of mirrors what's happening in our community. We've had a twenty, approximately a twenty percent growth in sixty plus and a decline in people underneath that age. Um, I don't think that that's going to change. And from what I'm hearing in the community, these other available beds in the private sector, they're full too.
Correct, yeah, I believe they are.
It's hard to place anybody.
They also have that, they have the opportunity because of, to, to pick who they want, and so they're going to pick an easier case, they're going to pick someone who's paying privately because the reimbursement is better. Uh, where we're focused on providing for the community, so, um, we usually take into consideration if someone's safe at home or safe in a facility, we're going to take someone who's unsafe at home or, um, working with Adult Protective Services, um, someone who's losing their home, losing placement, we're trying to figure out that. We're not concentrating on payer source, we're concentrating on taking care of our community.
Does that call fall on you, or is there a, a group that gets together and says, okay, here's our waitlist, who's coming in next, who's going to get this next bed? How do you make that decision?
We talk as a group, but it's hard, it's, it's really hard. I mean, especially, like I said, we're all community members, we all grew up here, so these, these referrals are people we know. And so we take those things in consideration, who's struggling the most, um, who's at home alone, you know, uh, with the Medicaid waiver program. Uh, max, you get six hours a week, a week, that is, you know, that's two showers.
So when you say we though, is that administration at the Maples who makes the decision?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we sit down, uh, with nurse, I mean, obviously the first thing that we decide is, can we meet this person's needs? Um, and then from there, we look at what's the best option. We also have four units, we call them households, we're really, we're really focusing in on creating a home-like environment, so we're looking at who is the best fit for which household. We don't want to bring someone who is cognitive and needs rehab into a, you know, a dementia unit, that wouldn't be the best case. But we also don't want the opposite, we're not going to bring someone who is struggling, struggling cognitively into a unit of long-term care because that doesn't best fit them either. So we take that into consideration too. So of our waitlist of like twenty-five, we kind of have that split up into like four baby waitlists, I guess.
Yeah.
Just trying to make it the best for everyone involved, because it is communal living, you know, there's nineteen other people living in that unit.
Other comments or questions for Megan? Megan, appreciate you being here today. I tell you, I know you're, you're attending with some regularity. We're getting three or four, um, visits with you a year. I'm finding that very helpful.
Thank you.
And to the other outside agencies that have been reporting to us, I really am grateful. It's, I, it, we all get to hear the same message at one time. I know it takes away from your day, but, uh, I think it's very helpful for the, uh, commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other department heads reports? If not, we'll close that out and move into finance.
Awesome, so, uh, this morning we are requesting approval for the bills in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and sixty-one cents.
A dinner table motion? I'll make the motion to pay the bills. Thank you, Gary. Mark your support. Thank you, Tim. Any comments or questions?
Just noting the numbers high because we're making other entities whole right now, right?
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
This was the end of the fiscal year.
Yes. So there's a little, there's some backdating happening.
If you're ready for the question, uh, roll call please.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Rollout?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Katie, do you need to say anything, uh, on behalf of the treasurer this morning?
Um, I can. Uh, the treasurer's office is an office of one, um, as of this morning, and so we would ask for grace in the building as well as in the community. Um, Kelly's going to work really hard to keep the office afloat until we can get other, uh, folks in that office.
Okay, let us know how we can help. All right. Any questions, uh, for Katie regarding the treasurer's office? All right, if there's nothing else, we, we have a presentation at ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Um, so why don't we take a couple of new business items? If you'd kick it off for us, please.
Yes, so the first item under new business is the chief deputy wages. This is specific to the clerk treasurer and register of deeds office. Um, as you know, elected officials have chief deputy, uh, positions that serve as their right-hand person in their elected, uh, capacity. Um, we have been given, uh, knowledge from our legal counsel that all of these positions should be salaried positions, uh, because their salaries fall under the same, uh, requirements and, uh, process of an elected official. So as you know, an elected official's salary cannot be diminished within the term, can only be increased or kept the same during a term. Well, because the chief deputies are elected officials in the sense of when the elected official steps aside, they should be treated the same way. Uh, currently, the chief, um, assistant prosecutor and the undersheriff are already salaried positions, so they're, um, in line with what the guidance is from legal counsel. However, the three other positions have been hourly positions for quite some time. And so in effort to correct that and be salary, what we have done is we looked at the overtime allotted to those three positions over the last three years, and we took an average. We took the hourly rate and times it by twenty-eighty, which is a full-time schedule, and then, um, added on the average overtime for the last three years on top of that salary. Um, so what you have in your packet are the three new posi, uh, three new salaries that I'm requesting be approved for those three positions. And again, that's the hourly times twenty-eighty plus the average of the three, um, years of overtime allotted to those positions. You may ask, uh, why there is overtime, the clerk's office specifically with elections most times, or if there's a court matter that is called in on a holiday or a weekend, they are sometimes called in, and that's why there's been overtime over the last few years. As well as the, um, treasurer's office during tax time, it gets a little wild in there, and so sometimes they're working extended hours as well. Typically, the, um, chief deputy registrar doesn't do overtime, um, so over the last three years, there was no overtime for that position, and that's why that position is a straight, um, times twenty-eighty. The one difference with the chief, uh, deputy registrar though, is they do get a dollar stipend for passport processing, which you've approved annually for the last few years. And, um, under guidance, under the legal counsel, they said the stipends are separate and should not be part of the salary. So that is a separate item, so it's the base salary plus the stipend, which is a dollar per hour work. Um, and that is, legal counsel is saying stipend should be kept separately. Is there any other questions?
Paula, is there anything you want to add before we go to questions? Hey, let's open it up to questions then. Is there a way that we keep track of that stipend, the hours they're putting in, or is Paula keep track of it?
So how we've, um, done it throughout the last four years I've been here is it hasn't been by hour, but it's been by the revenue coming in for that processing. And, um, as long as the revenue has exceeded what we're paying out, we've kept it in the budget. And it still is exceeding what is being paid out. That stipend is only, um, given to the chief deputy and the other, um, registrar. It's not given to Paula as the elected official, and that dollar per hour, uh, the revenue coming in for the processing is exceeding that dollar per hour.
Other questions? Katie, of course, Rhonda and I have had an advantage because we talked through this.
Yes.
But, um, a question I believe that I'd asked you before. There are some laws that govern salaried employees, and it's kind of specific, it'll say, you know, do you have supervisory responsibilities? What is your decision-making process? How much of that is burdened on you? And if you don't fit a certain box, even if you're on salary, you still have to be paid overtime if you get over forty hours. That would not be the case here?
Correct, so under the different standards for that supervision is one of the items to determine exempt versus non-exempt. But the other item is the, um, amount of the salary. And so the salary would have to be below, it's about thirty-five thousand dollars for then that person to be, um, non-exempt from overtime. These salaried positions are exceeding that base dollar under the F, F S L A. Um, so they would not then be, uh, subject to overtime. They're also acting in supervisory capacities. Uh, when the elected official is not there, they're acting as the elected official, and they're acting in, uh, most cases as the office supervisor. Um, that first line supervisor for the staff that are within the office as well. So they're meeting those standards to be exempt from overtime.
I had one more question.
Please.
Vaughn, I mean, why didn't you round those numbers up to the nearest dollar versus the cents? For a salary position, that's kind of.
I, so I mean, it could go either way, right? Uh, you could round it or you could not. Um, if you rounded it, you're typically rounding up, and then what's to stop other staff from saying they got an undue, um, raise that then they were not granted because they didn't get a rounded up number? Um, you'll notice over the last four years, when Jackie and I were presenting, uh, the different changes in wages to put them on the tables, none of them were rounded, they were established in cents and dollars. And so I'm keeping with that theme versus giving these folks a rounded number, whereas we didn't do that with the other positions.
Thank you. What prompted this to be reviewed?
Um, actually, our county treasurer was at a recent, uh, conference, uh, for the Michigan Association of County Treasurers. And, um, Bonnie Toski was there giving a presentation on elected officials and chief, chief deputy elected officials and, you know, the whole premise of those elected offices. And the reason it was a topic of conversation is in many counties, chief deputies are in a union, and they're hourly. And there's a lot of issues with that because while you're in a union, you're on a test step scale typically. And so folks were, um, being given lower starting wages when it was midterm of an elected official, and technically they can only inherit the existing, uh, salary, you can't diminish that salary within a term. And so this became a, quite the topic of conversation as of late among the elected officials because these chief deputies in many counties are getting back pay now because they were given a lower salary midterm when they should have inherited the other person's salary. So this was a topic of conversation at the conference, and Kelly brought it back and said, hey, I heard this, should we look into it? And so I reached out to Matt at Cole Stoker, and I said, hey, you know, this is, this is what Kelly is hearing, can you offer some insight on this? And he responded, you know, with, yes, indeed, they should be, uh, salaried positions because it's problematic if they're hourly because one could say that their salaries were diminished, uh, midterm, if say in twenty-twenty-three, you had six thousand dollars in overtime, and then twenty-twenty-four, you had two thousand dollars in overtime. On face value, you've now diminished that salary, which you cannot do midterm.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
Paula, you have a comment, please? You come to the microphone?
Yeah.
I'm not disputing this at all, but I just wondered, I know when I approached you at budget time about my chief deputy getting a raise, um, she was in the threshold for the compatible counties or comparables. Was that, were these other two positions with this raise, do they fall within the comparables? Okay.
They're still, um, they're still mid.
Okay.
Uh, they're not, we are not the highest paid by any means.
All right, all good comments. Is there any other questions or comments? It's discussed with all these folks.
Uh, I sat down with, um, Kelly, Tammy and Paula, and we talked this, and they, they saw what Matt had provided, and we chatted through this idea of timesing by twenty-eighty and using the average of the overtime. Um, we used three years, which was the recommendation of legal counsel as well.
We've agreed over the last few years that we want to modernize our practices. I think this is just one more process we're going through. Gary, would you like to make the motion? Yeah, I'll make the motion, I gotta read it though. Please do. That the board of commissioners approves the shift in wages from hourly to salary for the chief deputy clerk, chief deputy treasurer, and the chief deputy register of deeds in the amounts detailed in the October seventh twenty-five memo from the county administrator and amends appendix B of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Fiscal.
Say fiscal? Is your support? Mark your support, thank you. Is there additional comments or questions? If you're ready for the question, roll call please.
Knight?
Yes.
Rollout?
Yes.
Power?
Yes.
Do not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, I see that, uh, our ten o'clock presentation is available. Amy, would you like to join us up at the podium?
Just give me one second, I gotta load the present.
All right.
Hold you back, and I figured you were probably.
I think you already heard it.
Yeah, Katie.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Thank you.
Didn't want to catch you off guard.
Oh, no, appreciate it.
We don't play gotcha here.
I like that.
I don't.
Heart doesn't.
See it happen. Yeah, right, I know. We're earned. Think we're loading up your presentation?
Yeah, I, and several of you, I think, already saw this, the summer when you came to the school and, and I gave the tour and, um, was able to take you through some of the new facilities that, that we had. Um, I think the, the biggest thing is, is we just wanted to say thank you to our community for the support of the bond. You were able to really make some needed improvements, and, um, some of that you'll see. Uh, we've had sort of facilities master plan that we've been, um, working through for a while. Mike Zalinski, our maintenance director, um, had worked on that with Matt Olson, uh, before I took over, and, um, has really done a lot to improve, uh, our facilities to make sure that they are structurally sound and, um, good for the next generation.
And this is a screen share, is that correct, Katie?
Yep, so those on YouTube can see it, if you want to.
Oh, yeah, perfect, yeah, thank you. Um, so, um, as we go through this, if you have questions, feel free to stop me. Um, so you say just scroll, let's see. What's it doing? Oh, there it goes, went too far. All right. Um, basically, we just wanted to say thank you for everything. Um, one of the, the big pieces that we are most proud of is that every single facility in our district was able to be touched and have some sort of improvement. Um, one example of us trying to be fiscally responsible was, uh, the new facility, Homestead Hills, had about eight hundred thousand dollars for new furniture for that building. Uh, we did not think it was fair that that was the only building that had money allocated for furniture, so we were able to repurpose and allocate that funding so that every single student, um, and classroom in the district had new student chairs, desks, tables, and every teacher got a new teacher desk and chair. Um, so I think that was just one of the ways that we were trying to be really intention, intentional and purposeful about using our dollars wisely. Um, the last time that new furniture had been purchased was in the last bond, which was in nineteen ninety-nine. So, um, I think the furniture served its purpose, and, um, hopefully we'll get that same life out of the, this furniture. Um, so what I did is, um, just showed a, um, screenshot basically of each, uh, facility that we have, and then how much money was spent with bond dollars and how much was added from sinking fund. And I know that was a question that you had, so I can start off with that. Sinking funds are, are voter-approved, um, millages that, um, are usually allocated over a long period of time. Um, so the one that we had was a ten-year, and there are certain things that you can use sinking fund dollars on. Um, you can replace things, uh, you can replace a wall, but you can't paint a wall. You, um, can't do maintenance on things, you can't buy things like furniture with sinking fund dollars, it has to be permanent, structural things. Um, so that's why there's different, um, pots of money. So that's why bonds are also utilized. A bond, um, is usually something that is a shorter term, term project, but it's a large project. So usually it's a building of a facility, it's doing major maintenance overhauls, roofing, infrastructure, things like that. Um, and you have to spend your bond dollars within five years. Usually within the first two, you have to have shown that you have spent, um, at least half of that, and by the, um, fourth year, you can extend it into the fifth year, but you have to show that you've spent at least eighty-five percent. There's a lot of rules that go with it. Um, bonds, uh, when they go out to a community for a vote as well, uh, you can go qualified or unqualified, some of that helps with ratings. Um, sometimes it depends on the, the time that it takes to have your plans reviewed at the state level before, um, a bond is approved. Our bond was, um, considered unqualified, meaning that we had to state what projects that we were going to do. But we didn't have to say, like, for instance, it said that we were going to spend a thousand. But we didn't have to say, like, for instance, it said that we were gonna spend a thousand dollars in every building on furniture. We obviously spent more than that, but you have to list out what projects you plan to do. If you go qualified, you have to do every single thing according to plan in what you proposed. So there are some nuances to that. And sometimes as you get into projects, you realize eh, that's not really going according to plan or COVID happens and everything is, you know, twenty to forty percent over the cost that you had anticipated. So one of the things that we had to do was we combined our sinking fund dollars with bond dollars to make these projects happen. The original bond was for thirty eight million. And the first series that went out, I think, was forty three million that was turned down by voters. Project scope was modified, it was not approved again. The fourth time, it was at thirty eight million, knowing that the intent would be to take those sinking fund dollars and add to the bond because we, you know, had to do that. As we got underway, then the COVID pieces started to impact us with the ability to get materials, the cost overages, the shipping delays, there was just a lot of things going on. And there was a lot of infusion of federal dollars going out into the United States, so everybody was doing a lot of projects at that time, so materials were hard to come by. But I think we we did a really good job of being mindful of these obstacles and planning ahead for them. So one of the things that we did do with our federal COVID dollars was we were able to supplant funds. Meaning that normally you can't use federal dollars for something you already pay for. It has to be a separate project. During COVID, they said you can pay for things you already pay for. So we paid for salaries with the COVID dollars. And then we kept our general fund dollars or the dollars we get from state and property taxes. And we were able to put that into our fund balance. Knowing full well that as we started to get this underway, we might run into some challenges. And it was good that we planned ahead because we obviously did run into some financial challenges, so. Any questions about those funding pots or how they work?
So just for clarification.
Yeah.
The monies you receive for operating.
Yes.
Some of those do get used for these improvements.
Yeah, general fund dollars can be used. Unfortunately, general fund dollars barely cover operating cost most of the time. Like, you just saw that the state passed the budget finally after we were already underway. Last year, they approved the budget late as well, but they didn't give us a per pupil fund increase. As you know, you have employees that have contracts and those go up every year. The cost to operate a district goes up every year, you know, gas, electric, all of those things increase. So if we're continuing to be funded at the same level and not having an increase to funding, that does impact you just for the sheer cost of increases that happen across the board for salaries and electrical and utilities and things. So most often times, our budget covers what we are doing operationally. Last year, because there was not an increase and the state started passing on the cost of retirement. So you probably heard about the three percent that employees at the state level used to pay for their retirement costs. They decided to not make employees fund that anymore. And they decided that money was gonna get funded by the district. So now the district add added an additional three percent cost for all of our retirement costs for our employees. Last year, they gave us a cost offset and that was their reason for not giving us a per pupil increase. That did not work out in our favor. We lost about a million dollars last year that was not planned for because this was a last minute change to our budget. This year, we planned for them not giving us a per pupil increase. We planned to have to pay these retirement costs. And we cut about two million out of our budget from services that that don't touch kids, basically, you know, like we had two technicians that were working on computers. We dropped down to one technician from outside and then we had a teacher who could do halftime teaching, halftime technician. So we tried to find ways to be creative to cut costs. And even with all of that really intentional planning, we still were about seven hundred thousand dollars short and that came in the form of the cost that we have to now incur for retirement that was not planned for. And that was a one time offset last year that they did not put into this year's budget. So as you can imagine, it's really hard to fund a new roof when you are going into deficit. When you are having all of these tweaks that are being made to the general fund.
Yeah. Hi, Amy.
Hi.
We love our schools, our song communities and, you know, wanna start off that way. I think some of the frustration that I sensed in the community with the effort to pass the bond and it took four times was this idea that we have the schools and then they just deteriorate. And, you know, we have to build a new one because these aren't salvage salvageable, you know, the Crystal Lake. The old high school. So I guess what I hear you saying is that unlike like our county campus, we have to have a capital plan. We know our heating system's not gonna last forever. We know improvements and so we we whittle, you know, we build up funds to say in five years, we better plan for this because it's going to happen. What I'm hearing you saying is the school can't do that.
Correct, yeah, so.
Even now with the new school built, is it, is it, we built it, it's beautiful. And so when the community says, okay, how are we gonna maintain it and make sure it stays this way? What is your answer?
Yeah, so I mean, that was one of the reasons why the sinking fund was passed. One of the things that people probably don't realize is Michigan is one of the few states that does not plan for infrastructure. So our budget that we get for operating schools does not include actually maintaining the buildings that you're in. So they expect that communities in the state of Michigan will pass bonds or millages to help fund infrastructure. And that's a piece I think people just don't know. And the sinking fund, as you know, was something that was started about ten years ago. Prior to that, we had not asked for a sinking fund typically. Benzy schools, history had been that they would do a bond. And then maybe twenty years, twenty five years later, they would go out and try to ask for another bond. As you can imagine, buildings deteriorate pretty quickly if you don't have a way to maintain. You know, we we have about a hundred thousand dollars that's put aside for just maintenance of facilities. But we can't put on a new roof with a hundred thousand dollars. It would take us ten years to save up that kind of money and not do any other maintenance to put a new roof on the high school. So it is really critical that these dollars go to helping support infrastructure. And that was something that Mike and I were both very passionate about is making sure we were leaving these facilities in a better state than we found them and that we had a long term plan to maintain them. So even though we had thirty eight million dollars, it went really fast. And all of our priorities were always on infrastructure. So do they all get new roofs? Yes, they all have a thirty year roof except for Betsy Valley got a twenty year roof. Because there was a snafu with when they did the contract and it got messed up that it only got a twenty year. It'll be fine, we'll work through that. It's the smallest building, thank goodness, so it'll be the easiest one to probably cover the cost of if we have to get to that point. But everything got new, new roof, new heating, electrical upgrades, plumbing, new windows in some cases in places. Parking lots were redone. So we were trying to do a lot of the infrastructure pieces that cost a lot of money to maintain. And back to the sinking fund. I can put in a new parking lot with sinking fund, but I can't resurface and stripe a parking lot with sinking fund. So some of these projects are always put into a position of having to ask for two pots of funding just because of the rules that the state has allocated for sinking fund. So it's it's very complicated and frustrating in many, many ways. But essentially, to answer your question, it would be what we are looking at as we go through this is we would like to continue having a sinking fund. We obviously have done a lot of upgrades and work. And so I think we have a plan to continue. And as we go through this, you'll see some of the the needs that we'll still have that won't be completed with these funds. But I think we're in a very good position right now. Knowing that, you know, most of the time, our equipment has to make it twenty five years because that's about how long it takes before a bond is passed. We want to make sure that our things are in good working order. You know, I have Mike and Barry who have both been trained on how to, you know, do our systems, keep them up to date. Irv is learning all about the boiler system so we can continue to take care of those. So all of those heating, cooling infrastructure pieces were all the priority focus first and foremost. And then then we went back and looked at, okay, what are the other things that are maybe not as as much of a need as it is more of a want? I would say that probably eighty five to ninety percent of the work we did was need. There was very little want. But I think we tried our best to make it look good and hopefully you all agree. So at Betsy Valley, bond projects paid for parking lots, digital sign, the new roof replacement, ceiling tile replacement, HVAC upgrades, water upgrades and kitchen sanitary upgrade. Sinking fund paid for playgrounds, wayfinding signage, window sill replacement, abatement of asbestos that was in soffit, that would be that material that you see up above the exterior of the building. We replaced our electrical, our wiring panels, our pump station and added an emergency generator there, which does run the phone system because our phones are now online. I would say one thing to know about Betsy Valley is it was built in nineteen sixty three. It went into operation in nineteen sixty four. And pretty much everything that you see on that list was original items being replaced.
Amy, I noticed you skipped the snow guards, is there a particular reason?
Oh, I was just reading too fast. The snow guards were also added to the roof. We had some issues with snow sliding off because our old roofs, especially at the high school, were ballasted, meaning they had rocks on top. And as the sarnaphil, which is what the material is, gets weathered, it's less viscous, so it's not as slippery. But because these are all new, it was very slippery. We had big sheets of ice and snow coming off, so we added roof rakes. There will be some more added as well, especially near where the generators were at. We had an issue at the high school where all of the gas lines broke in the same week last February when we had that nice big melt after we had really heavy snow. So we've made some modifications to that, so that won't happen in the future. Oops, what am I doing? Oh. And then those are just some more photos of some of the work that was done. Homestead Hills was all bond dollars. It was just over fourteen million to build Homestead Hills Elementary. This sits on the high school campus as well. So some of the things that we've been trying to do are create some efficiencies with combining campuses and having closer location. One of the other things that we did, because it's on the high school campuses, there's often a fight over gym time and space to be used. So we did build a full size gymnasium court at Homestead Hills that can also be utilized for sporting events as well. And then this, these are just some photos of Homestead Hills. So you can see a little bit inside of the classrooms and the outdoor playgrounds. Homestead Hills was built with some intentionality for early childhood programming. Many of you probably know that about five, six years ago, that we had four licensed infant toddler slots in the whole county. So if you were planning to have a baby, you probably needed to get on a waitlist before you knew you were gonna have a baby. With this program, we were able to add twenty four additional infant toddler slots to the county. So we feel very proud about that. That has been a big selling point for attracting teachers as well. We do make sure that school staff are prioritized on the list to get slots first so that we can make sure we keep our teachers teaching. And we also opened it up to the community. So we have infants and toddlers. We have three year old programming that we received a special grant from the state. We are one of eight sites in the state that has strong beginnings, which is for three year olds. And then we have GSRP there. And this was also built with a opportunity to have a viewing or observation space so that we could partner with a university at some point to have a learning lab. And we also have our CDA class, which is a child development class that comes over and works there. I think we've been able to employ seven graduates over the last five years into that early childhood program. So we're pretty proud of the fact that we are creating job ready skills for students to be employed.
Amy, if I could, over the summer, you and I briefly talked about connecting with Community Action Agency.
Yeah.
Were you able to do that?
I was, yeah, I went and took a visit. And then I invited her to be part of our stakeholder meeting, but she wasn't able to come that day. But she, we toured the the new facility. And then I think their focus is gonna be on infant toddler programming for students with special education needs there. Which is something that because of our space, even though we built intentionally with extra classrooms for early childhood, we have already exceeded our space. We have utilized every possible room. And if we continue to grow, we're gonna have to have some different conversations about what that looks like.
Good.
Yeah. And I I think it's great because it also has provided childcare for probably many of your employees and other employers in the county. So this is Lake Yan. That box in the center there, that picture is the addition that was added on to Lake Yan. We also added on an early childhood wing at Lake Yan as well. So we added two large classrooms and then we remodeled the computer lab and the old teachers lounge and made a third room. So we have an infant toddler space and then we have two preschool spaces. They have already started to max out their space as well. We used a classroom last year. So we are continuing to see a big need, but it is helping, I would say, with enrollment. We are seeing a lot of those families that are taking advantage of the early childhood program stay in our school system. And we think that's a great transition for kids as well as families. We do offer before care and after care at Lake Yan. And I believe there's just after care right now at Homestead Hills. Some of it is dependent on staff. We're trying to be mindful of not overworking them. And it is hard to find people that wanna just come in and work a few hours a day. So we're trying to balance all of that and and keep these programs going. The bond did pay for a new sign at Lake Yan, a new boiler, replaced the roof on the entire building, added a classroom addition, remodeled some classrooms. We removed and replaced damaged ephes on the exterior by the library. We relayed some library windows, added some irrigation and added an emergency generator at Lake Yan as well. Along with furniture, which furniture doesn't get listed, but they did get new furniture as well. We resurfaced the gymnasium there. And so now all of our gymnasiums are getting branded so that they all look like we are truly one Benzy. I know we made that move, I think, probably ten years ago, but there wasn't really an effort to start branding. If you look up in the top, there's some lunch tables up there. We have Husky logos on all the tables now, so every kid that's in Benzy County Central Schools looks like they're all part of the same school system. Oh. Then this is the middle school, high school and Benzy Academy. So we had just over three million of bond dollars and six hundred and fourteen thousand of sinking fund dollars. The bond dollars paid for stadium lighting out at the football field, roof replacement, remodeled the locker rooms, concession area, the weight room was added on. We did a cafeteria remodel, we added a new vestibule at the high school, remodeled the hallways, science classrooms were all remodeled. I did find out a fun fact that the science rooms actually had cabinetry that came from the old high school when that building was built. So we definitely got our money's worth out of some of those materials. And then sinking fund paid for a new drain field at the high school, replaced parking lots, did sidewalks, and then we did an upgrade to our auditorium sound and lighting. The lighting did come from the general fund. That was some money that we were able to take out of that.
There was a time that the boosters were able to pay some of for some of those improvements like at the football field.
Mm hmm.
Is that just not available anymore?
I think the lighting upgrade was somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars and the boosters just are not raising that kind of funds. A lot of the replacement that happened were replacing things from nineteen sixty four. So in previous bonds, I think when they passed it, they were just not able to make the money go as far as they wanted. And so some things just had to stay as they were. And like Mike and I had mentioned before, we continued to look for ways of things that had to be replaced. We wanted infrastructure replaced first and foremost. In the cafeteria, we we removed all the asbestos that was up in the ceiling. That had to be done. But also we were able to uncover a really cool feature. I learned about Googie architecture. Apparently, our high school was built with that design. And that was a very popular design in the fifties and sixties resorts, resort villages. And so that's what our high school looked like. So when we built Homestead Hills, we actually took the design of the Cherry Huts front peak. And that's what the entrance of Homestead Hills was modeled after, which was also Googie architecture. So learn something new while I was doing all this. And there's just some photos of some of the upgrades that happened. Whoops. And more high school cafeteria, some of you went there, so I'm sure you understood how congested the cafeteria used to be. So having this vestibule area where they can come in and get food really has helped the kitchen staff be able to expand their operations as well. And then our bus garage, so in the bottom, there is a photo of our old bus garage. The first section, the shorter section was built in the thirties. And then I think that other addition was done somewhere in the seventies. You probably know this, Gary, better than I do.
And she couldn't see.
Well, you might have an insider there. Well, you might have an insider there. Um but uh that building was in desperate need. Uh it, it did not even fit the full-size buses that we have now. So when, when um when Bo was doing work, he'd have to leave the garage doors open. Um so the new facility does provide for him to be able to get a bus all the way in and shut the doors, uh which is great. Um so we have two bays. Um the taller door has a lift station. The other door has a portable lift that we had from our old um bus garage that we brought over. And then the third bay is a wash bay. And that was really important to us because our district is three hundred and fifty square miles. Um we have buses driving about a thousand miles a week and we're on gravel roads. We're on roads that don't even look like real roads. Sometimes I question if they are really a two-lane road. Um and so we know that the, the biggest thing that takes our buses off the road is not the engines malfunctioning, it is rust. And when we get red-tagged, um we can't drive that bus anymore. So we were really um intentional about extending infrastructure by having a bus wash and um we're hoping that that will keep these buses on the road. Um one of the other pieces that I, I'm gonna transition into now is future sinking fund. Um our current sinking fund that was passed was for um ten years and that is coming up um at the end of its life next December. And um the next section, we'll just kinda talk about future projects that are still needed that we didn't have money to finish. Um one of the other pieces that have changed with sinking funds is that after we were in the middle of our sinking fund, the state did change the rules and did make it allowable now that buses can be covered under sinking fund millages, which is huge for us because um when I started in this role almost, I guess, over five years ago, buses were eighty-eight thousand dollars. Um the last set of buses that I purchased were a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And that went up dramatically during COVID and has not come back down. We ended up switching from buying all internationals to starting to buy Thomas buses. They have the same engines and they have a lot of the same equipment, which Bo really wanted to make sure that we could interchange items and I agreed with that. Um but they ended up being between ten and twenty thousand dollars cheaper um depending on the model. So we decided that that was more fiscally responsible action, so we did that. Um so as we go through this, feel free to stop me if there's questions. Um Betsy Valley, um so this, this past year, we did some concrete replacement out front of the school. Uh we replaced uh the concrete path um to the playground. There was a playground that would, that we received a grant for last year from the Minger Foundation. So there is a brand-new faci, um playground out there. It's great. If you haven't seen it, check it out. Um the kitchen door is being replaced and then exterior gym doors. These gym doors were from nineteen sixty-four. So I would say that, you know, we had some great infrastructure done. We've done a good job to try to maintain them, but they were at the end of their life. Um this coming summer, we just approved last night at our board meeting, um the remainder, remainder of our sinking fund dollars will go to remodel Betsy Valley's kitchen. Um it will be also to knock out some walls and make it a much larger kitchen. It's a very small kitchen. Um we're gonna replace and remodel all of the bathrooms. Um there are two gang bathrooms and then I think there are six um single-stall bathrooms. Uh we're gonna re, um do an upgrade on the front canopy and we're gonna repurpose the extra brick we had left over from the um Homestead Hills uh building. So that'll have new brick columns um and give that a little bit of a facelift. And then the lower L um is going to get um uh cubbies and then the main hallways will get new locker replacements. Um these are some future needs that are not gonna be covered under what we currently have um left in our sinking fund. So we do have some classrooms that still have um VCT, which is vinyl that um, that requires a um waxing every year. You have to strip, you have to reel, reseal it and wax it. It's very time-consuming. And what we found with the LVT is that um it is, it's very durable, it cleans up really nicely, and it doesn't require all of this time um and cost for stripping and sealing and things like that. Um and if you have a bad piece, you can pull out a piece and replace it and you can be done with it in five minutes or less. If you wanna replace one of these tiles, it is a very laborsome job and um requires chisels and all the things. So um it will be a better um purpose, I think, and it'll save us some money in the long run. So we're trying to look for ways to consent, continue to be mindful of that. Um there is um a pole barn. Mike put this in here just to mention that a lot of our facilities are running out of space and we don't have any storage facilities. So that is something that he thinks we need to keep in mind is just how will we continue to store equipment at schools when we continue to use every available space for educating kids? Um the drain field is still working, but it's from nineteen sixty-three and we're not sure how much longer it's gonna continue to do its job. So and that's a problem that nobody wants to have and deal with, those malfunction. Um there, the gym is still the nineteen sixty-three gym ceiling tiles. Um those can't be purchased any longer, so replacing things is challenging now. Um we also have nineteen sixty-three windows. There are forty-seven windows there that are single-pane, not really energy-efficient. Um and the caulk that ha, that's there that you can see, there, there is asbestos in that, so that would have to be um treated. We've re, we've removed almost all of the asbestos in all of our facilities. Mostly what's left is an external soffit. Um in that picture there, there is some asbestos um in those things, so we're trying to get that all out. But again, that's, that feels like a need right now, uh or a want right now more than a need. I mean, it's still doing its job, so that was not on the priority list. Um we have some um doors that did not get replaced. Most of our doors did get replaced during um the bond and sinking fund dollars, but this door right there is a door that's between um a classroom and the maintenance room. It doesn't really get used. So there's, there's several doors that we just left because we're like, it's, it's not impacting kids. One of the biggest things that we did do was we changed out all the locks in every one of our facilities so that they can be backlocked from the inside. So any kid, no matter what, if they're in a room by themselves and there's a lockdown, they can lock the door and be in a secure space. We thought that was really important. Um there's an old shower at Betsy Valley that doesn't get used, but um they have asked to have one back. They're the only building now that doesn't have access to a shower facility. And sometimes kids have accidents and things happen and um they would like to have that. So down the road, we'd love to see a way to remodel that and, and be able to have that accessible if a kid needs it. Um then Lake Anne, um future sinking needs. So this summer, we did replace concrete pads there. We upgraded all the temperature controls that are now twenty-six years old and the most newest building that we had before Homestead Hills. Um we replaced manifolds and uh replaced some steel doors that were exterior doors. And then um next summer, they will also have locker um replacements. And because they're twenty-six years old, salt and boots and wet just don't do well with steel lockers. So those are some things we've gotta keep looking at. Um there's some re-glazing of windows here. Um you can't really tell so much, but there's some moisture that's gotten in between the panes, so we would have to re-glaze a few of those windows. And um there is another boiler that we did not replace yet. Um still working. I mean, that's the thing. It's still working, but if we're not gonna get another bond for twenty years, it may not be working in, when it's forty-six years old. So these are things that we're keeping in mind that we would be able to replace with sinking fund dollars. And back to your original point, continue to maintain our facilities so that we don't have to abandon them. Um at Lake Anne, these are um air conditioning units and um classroom units that are all twenty-six years old. They're working, but for how long? I mean, th, this is us making our list of future needs that we know and things we've gotta keep on a priority list as funding comes in. Um again, these are exterior doors. Um we have four that need to be replaced. Um continue to update um the control, the lighting control system and the energy management system at Lake Anne is on a different system than what we currently use because it's an old system. They don't talk to each other. So those are things that, it's working, but it's, it's problematic. You can't remote in, you have to physically go there and do some things. So. Um these are some other repairs. The, the ephes that was done on the exterior was done at the same time as Betsy Valley's. We did have to replace Betsy Valley's because we were having some leaking underneath the window sills. That is starting to happen at Lake Anne as well. They were both done at the same time. I, i, it will be problematic. Um so those are things that we've gotta take care of. Um these are older bathrooms um that, you know, the, the, the doors start to have trouble swinging after a while when they're twenty-six years old. Some things start to go. They're not, they're not, not working, so we're gonna keep using them. It, this right now would be more of a want than a need, but again, we're keeping it on a list because twenty years from now, they're gonna be forty-six years old. Um middle school, we had some work done this year. We had some concrete pads added um out back by the, the playground for the middle school. We added a new flooring. Um so we replaced all the old carpet that was twenty-six years old. So now we have LVT in all of those spaces. Um we upgraded temperature controls um because those were also done in nineteen ninety-nine's bond. Um so now we have better access control and better energy um management. And then we have um a plan to replace some windows. So from the central business office by the high school all the way down to the middle school, we will start replacing nineteen sixty-four windows. Um during the bond, we received a quote for over five hundred thousand dollars to replace the nineteen sixty-four windows at the high school. That felt like a want at that time and not a need, so we postponed. Um we do have a little bit of money left, so we're gonna try to start picking away at those old windows. Um this is the middle school science um room. These lab stations were from nineteen sixty-three. Um we've done some upgrades around them. We put in new flooring and some other things, but um we couldn't afford the stations at that time, so we said they're still functional. We're gonna keep using them.
This is Lynch's room, wasn't it, back in the day?
Probably, yes. Yeah. Um we did do an upgrade at the high school science lab. We did all of those, but there wasn't enough money to do middle school and we, we prioritized high school over middle school. So, I mean, we're gonna keep rolling with things if they're functional, but they're not pretty. Um at the middle school gym, um we had water fountains that were installed in the gym and they have been a real problem. Um they have caused leaks and damage to the floor. I, I'm not sure why anybody ever thought it was a great idea to put water next to a gym floor. Bad idea. Um so we're gonna re, remove those. Um drop ceilings. Um there's just some work in the bathroom or locker rooms that need to be done. And if you can see that far picture, those are pole showers. I don't know how many of you had to take a shower with pole shower, but it's not a real popular option for children. Um so the high school has new single-stall showers. Uh kids actually use them now. Middle school looks pristine because I don't think anybody really wants to use those. So we're, you know, that would be something we would like to change down the road. We would rather have clean kids than scared kids to shower. Um these are, are two, um there's two a hundred gallon gas-fired hot water heaters. They're currently twenty-five years old, moving into twenty-six years old. They're still working. Um we continue to do regular maintenance to keep them functional, but for how long? I mean, we know there's a lifespan for certain equipment and we had to prioritize. So this is something that is high on the list if we continue to have extra funds. Um and then we have some door, door locks, um just different things that, you know, need to be done. Was not eminent, but we made sure um it's on our list. Uh we have an old AC unit. Again, these are twenty-six years old, so still working, not sure how long. Um high school had exterior door replacement. Um we expanded our ballfield parking lot and did add an ADA um paved pathway to the ballfield. I know that was a priority for a lot of people for a while. We had been transporting people using a gator and different things, but um there is now an ability for people to use a wheelchair or some other way to get back to the ballfields. Um and then we also added in an ex, in another exit for the bus garage to um leave. We had originally had that in and we didn't think we were gonna have enough money, so we took it out. Um now that we did have enough money and we know the buses are using it, we thought it made sense to pave that. And then um that window replacement that I mentioned did get approved last night, so that will be um using up the remainder of sinking fund dollars next year. Um these are some things that we have on our list to do. Um these are old ceiling tiles from nineteen sixty-three. They're sound-dening ones, but they don't make them as replacements. So we would have to change out the um, the grid as well. Um the bandroom, um there's some acoustical work that needs to be done in there. Um that, of course, used to be the old stage, so lots of things there. There is some asbestos left in the high school. Um it's all encapsulated, so it's not a concern. It's above um a computer lab up in the ceiling. Uh it would be really great if we could remove that because if you can see, there's some beautiful transom windows that would bring in some nice natural light, but um it's right now covered in ceiling tile. So um but we know it's there. It's one of the last pieces left and we'd really like to make sure all of our buildings are free of that. Um there's still some bathroom remodels that we did not get to with the high school um upgrades. These are staff bathrooms and um bathrooms used um either in the offices or down in the teacher's lounge. And then there is an old bathroom. If you went to Benzy, you probably know about these two bathrooms back by the shop. Um they are not really ADA compliant. They're very small. I'm a pretty small person and I barely feel like I fit in there. So um those are some bathrooms that just don't really get used now, but they could be remodeled and, and utilized. Um our welding program is actually doing quite well. We are really proud of this program. We have a teacher that um has a welding certification from a previous life and um he became an English teacher. So he is spending three hours of his day um as our welding instructor. It was a great option because um CTC does offer this in Traverse City, but Benzy would get five slots. Most of our other programs, we got three. Um but there was a waitlist of twenty-five kids. And so by us taking on this program and doing it in-house, we have been able to get kids into apprenticeships already. We have kids that are, you know, doing um uh work-study and um we know that there's a lot of demand for welders in our area, so we're glad that this is something we can offer here. But we do need to fix some exhaust issues and some um electrical things in there. This used to be our ag-science room and it was also part of some other program. It wasn't specifically just for welding, so some upgrades there are necessary. And then um there's just some old things. We have an old chimney incinerator. Um we need to add some more roof rakes, like I mentioned earlier, and we'd like to see the remodeling of that football um track stadium concessions and bathrooms there. They're pretty outdated.
Amy, apo, I apologize for the interruption. We've been at this about forty minutes now. Are there some things you wanna highlight for us?
I think this is the end. I was trying to get faster here, but basically there's just a lot of replacements. The last thing I just wanted to mention was back to the sinking fund. If we were to ask for a new sinking fund, we wouldn't be able to call it a sinking fund renewal because if we want to add busing in, it would have to be called a new sinking fund. So I wanted to make sure that people understood that. And we also have been looking at, you know, our property taxes have gone up. We think that we could reduce what the ask would be to still be able to generate enough revenue to continue to maintain those pieces that I just highlighted that we need to do so that we can continue to keep our facilities functional and not have to, you know, ask for another bond or another millage um in the coming years. So hopefully you have appreciated the work that was done with the bond dollars that you feel like we made fiscally responsible decisions and tried to maximize the money. So if there's any other questions, yeah, go ahead, Bob.
What's the average graduating class size today?
Um last year's was kinda small. It was about seventy-five kids. Um I think the class coming up is, is over a hundred, might be one-ten, somewhere in there. It always depends on who decides to finish. Um but um we're anywhere between a, you know, eighty and a hundred, depending on um different um grades. There's some smaller classes in the elementary, but that always seems to change by the time they get to high school, so.
What ballot do you intend to do the new ask for the new sinking fund?
Um I think we're looking at doing something next year and potentially August and then maybe in November if it doesn't go through. Um we think there's a lot of education that we need to do to make sure people understand what we would be asking for and why. Um but I, I think the big takeaways are we can continue to provide transportation because we bought these buses and that's why I put that on there, so you can see the age of the buses. We bought ten, well, a little more than ten buses at one time. If you think that they're just about a hundred thousand dollars, you're talking about a million dollars that you're gonna have to come up with at some point in time. Um in ten years, I'm not going to be here, but somebody else will be. And that's a big amount of money to generate to keep buses on the roads. And we know when you have a three hundred and fifty-square-mile district, transportation is vital to helping kids get access to school. So this is a big reason why we are looking at um potentially asking for a future sinking fund so that buses could be covered.
Other questions from commissioners? Amy?
Sure.
I just have one and I just can't let it go.
Okay.
From the sale of Crystal Lake Elementary.
Yes.
What did you guys do with that?
So when we sold Crystal Lake, the intention was to build a maintenance facility because we've been expanding some of our programming. Right now, our um welding shop is also sharing space with one of the maintenance, um outdoor maintenance space. So he has to do repairs on mowers, they have to store tractors, different things. So if they were able to have their own space, we could have a full-size welding shop. Um the plan was to build that. We did, when we built um the bus garage, we did the infrastructure. So we have water and sewer and electrical already ready to go for that facility. Crystal Lake's plan was that we were going to build that. We held off because of the uncertainty with the state budget. We didn't know what was going to happen. Um we have to fund our um, our uh employees' costs through, through the summer months because we don't get our first state aid payment until the middle of October. So from the end of June through, we are paying salaries for employees without, with basically what we've held back in our reserves. And because we didn't know what was gonna happen and the fact that we knew that we had to borrow about seven hundred thousand from our fund balance because of this retirement offset, we held off on moving forward with building it. It's, the money's still sitting there, but we're kind of waiting to see what the state is gonna continue to do because I'm sure you're all aware that they've done a lot of finagling with pots of money. Um they have now given up the money that was being generated for schools, the gas tax, um and are now putting that on roads. And then they also gave up money for higher ed and took higher ed's money out of school aid. So they took four hundred million out of school aid. So our concern is we don't know if they're gonna continue to erode the funding that we have. And as much as we really wanna use that for a facility 'cause it's needed, we were trying to be smart and hold on to the funds just in case we needed it to continue to operate.
Thank you, Amy. I'm, I'm really just asking for the text. Thank you, Amy. I'm really just asking for the taxpayers.
Sure, yeah. No, I want them to know, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from the commissioners? And Amy, you're gonna be doing this presentation and inviting the public, I assume, over the next several months?
Well, I did do one, and the only person that came was Colin Mary. So we do have this on our website. Anybody can go find the slideshow and see anything that they want. I had invited in some other people. We had the Rotarians come in, offered it up to other community groups. People haven't really taken advantage of it, but I'm happy to go meet and talk to anybody that has questions. I think as we get closer to starting to move forward and really looking at an ask for a sinking fund renewal, we will start getting out there more. I'm happy to come back and talk if you want me to answer any other questions. We are working on a strategic plan for the district, and we had our first meeting last week, and we're working on setting priorities for the next five years. And we had about 40 community members and staff members that participated. So when I get that plan finalized, I'm happy to come back, probably sometime in February if you'd like me to come back and share that. I'm happy to do that.
And just to be clear, the ask on the ballot will be essentially you aren't asking for an increase of what you're getting, but it has to be called a new millage because the buses are being added in?
Yes, we'd have to add new language that says that we would now be including transportation.
Okay.
Yes, and I don't think that we would be asking for the same amount. I think we would be asking for less.
For less?
Yes, which I think is important for people to know.
I do, too.
Yeah, I mean, and I think because we were so strategic with this, that we were really intentional about using the money wisely, that we made the right moves so that we can keep infrastructure going well. So that, I think, is also a big part of why I think we would ask for less.
Thank you.
Talk about skilled trades.
Yes.
You guys gonna be expanding skilled trades?
Well, the trickiest part is that you have to have a certified credentialed teacher. So it's hard for us to expand the trades when you can't always find somebody. Like, we used to have a construction trade program. We have not been able to find a construction trade certified person. I think Western Michigan, two years ago, had one person graduate from their construction trades program. So in order for us to bring in, like, a retired builder or somebody, we would be looking at probably a halftime salary. They would have to get certified and be CTE-certified, so there's probably three classes they'd have to take. And we would be looking at probably spending around $80,000, because you have to pay retirement costs, insurance benefits, things like that. And so when you think about maybe 15 kids being impacted by a building trades program and spending $80,000 for a halftime teacher, it doesn't make as much sense when we're looking at class sizes for English and math and other things that we, we know we have a program we can send kids to in Traverse City that has better access to resources, better equipment, and things that we wouldn't necessarily be able to fund. So we've been trying to make decisions based on who are the teachers we have in front of us? What skills or abilities do they have? Can we make it work with who we have? And if it is something that we could expand, we'd love to, but right now, because of the funding, we're just not in a position to be able to expand programs. We're really trying to make sure that we're doing the best job with the programs we currently have.
I'm asking because I'm interested in getting a firefighter academy and an EMT course at the high school.
Yeah.
I did email you this back in April.
Yeah, and Matt Wilson said that he reached out to you on behalf of CTC?
I did talk to Matt.
Yeah, yeah, so he said he was gonna reach out to you on behalf of that to see if there was something that they could do.
Which person are you referring to?
Matt Wilson from the ISD, yeah. So he did tell me about that. I am interested in offering it if it's a course at the school, but it would be, like, the cost of the instructor is the problem, and you have to have somebody certified. And then we have to get a permit if they're not fully certified as a career and technical educator. Even our teacher Dylan, who is a teacher, he still had to get some career and technical training classes, and he's on a special waiver because of that. So it's pretty costly, and it's also an impact, too, if you don't have the right staff. So if he were to leave, I wouldn't be able to continue welding right now, because the cost of him as a teacher is already covered by him being a teacher in our district. We've been able to reallocate some people around to give him three hours a day to do the welding, but he was already on staff. If I had to go hire somebody additional, I don't think we could afford that.
Okay, the funding aspect, I think, was already taken care of, but.
Oh, well, that would be new information that I didn't have.
It was all included in the email.
Okay, I don't think I saw an email. I'll, can you resend that to me?
Yes, I can.
Because Matt had said he was following up with you, so I wasn't sure if it landed with him at the ISD.
Okay.
Yeah, but I'm happy to meet back up with you about that. I very much think it's important for us to have kids. And I did have one student this past year who was interested in doing fire training, and I think he did it at Career Tech. Seth Lammy. But yeah, I would be open and interested in that if we can find a way to fund it.
Other questions or comments? You're very comprehensive. We appreciate that. And also for the benefit of the community, you did invite the commissioners in this past summer to do a walkthrough, and we appreciate the level of communication.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to have you at any time. Feel free to reach out. You know, I want to make sure that you're getting the information that you need and for the constituents that you serve.
Very good. Thank you, Amy. So we've been at this almost two hours. Do we have to take a break?
Sure.
Yes, I will.
All right, let's try to keep it, keep it short.
Another 10 minutes if we can.
You're unmuted, Art.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be back in session at ten fifty-eight. Katie, you want to introduce the next subject on your new business, please?
Absolutely. So this item in the packet today is the release of funds for capital projects to the Maples. You'll recall, uh, four years ago, the Benzie County with the DHHS Maples Board worked together to put an agreement in place related to the dollars of the bond that are in excess of the payment and to utilize those dollars for capital needs. In your packet, you will see, uh, supporting documentation that was received from Karen at the Maples regarding the expenditures that were utilized for those dollars. Per the table that was within that agreement, they're allotted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this, uh, just this last fiscal year. And so what is in front of you today is to confirm the payment allocation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to reimburse the Maples for the capital projects they, um, spent over the last fiscal year.
Would you like to have a discussion before we entertain a motion? This is strictly for the old part of the building, correct?
That was, that was how it was framed up, yes.
And is this the last year on this, if I'm looking at that?
Yes.
Okay.
According to the agreement, yes.
Somebody wants to talk, I'll make the motion.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, but go ahead and make your motion.
That the Board of Commissioners confirm payment in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five to the Maples for capital expenditures in accordance with the documents of understanding dated October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one.
Did we get support?
Got support.
Thank you, Bob. Um, Katie, on the, uh, spreadsheet, the agreement that we had, it looks like after this disbursement, there's ninety-nine thousand dollars left, is that right?
Um, that was the projected amount. I would have to pull general ledger to see the exact amount, but it would be close to that.
It would be close to that.
Yeah.
And what would, if, if we're suggesting this is the last payment, what would those monies be used for then?
Uh, they could be used, uh, to go, go towards the bond payments and then we have lowered the bond, um, levy with the fiscal year for the L forty-twenty-nine, only take what we need.
Okay, so you're saying we may not have, at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six, we may not have a hundred thousand dollars remaining. All right, I guess where I'm going with this is that we know that there needs to be some window repairs being done there. If there's monies available from that fund, next year, let's have that conversation.
Absolutely, uh, we can have the conversation because as you know, the intent was to pay off the bond early. And because of the, the type of bond it is, we're not able to do that. And so we're, we're on schedule to pay off the bond, um, as it was projected from the beginning, which was specifically twenty-twenty-nine. And so there is the opportunity for that conversation because as you know, we've been lowering the levy every year to only take what we need, right? And so, um, we are not loving the maximum potential.
Right, okay, just wanted to get that conversation out there and if we would have that documented in the minutes, so we don't lose sight of it. Um, if you're ready, we'll call for the question, roll call, please.
Roll offs?
Yes.
That work?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Katie?
Making myself a note. So the next one is the purchase of computers for EMS. Um, over the last several months, we've talked about MDT computers, uh, for EMS, for the local fire and EMS agencies as well as central, um, central dispatch and the sheriff's office and Frankfurt PD. Uh, the purchase in front of you today is for the replacement computers for EMS specifically, uh, for our trucks, it is six computers. Michael Drager, uh, worked through our original vendor that provided the Panasonic ToughBooks, but then also looked into Dell. Dell has a tough book per se, um, as well, and Dell was much cheaper through the vendor pricing that we have with them. And so the recommendation is to move forward with the Dell, uh, computers versus the Panasonic computers, which saves us a, a quite a bit of money. Um, once these are purchased and brought in-house, Michael Drager and Sophia will get them ready to be then placed into the ambulances.
Is there questions or comments for Katie?
Are we getting the funding?
This was budgeted as part of the two-ten. Um, budgeting, yep.
Good question. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion. Rhonda, would you be willing to do that?
Um, I don't think you can invite people to make motions. I think they have to do it on their own.
Well, since we had like dead airspace.
Well, now I'm not going to because you invited me to, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that the Board of Commissioners authorized the purchase of six Dell computers and related docking stations for EMS operations with funds available in the two-ten EMS fund.
Mark will support, thank you. I do have a question, um, this might be for Tom, maybe?
I, I didn't look at thoroughly at the quote, um, these are for rugged laptops, not, um?
Correct.
Okay, and you're deciding to stay with a rugged laptop versus just maybe a semi-rugged? Because I don't think I've ever seen an EMP take the laptops out of the ambulances.
Uh, they don't, but they're very, very hard, the equipment.
Okay.
And this also includes new docking stations in that quote as well.
Yeah, I saw. That's all, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, comments? If not, you ready for the question?
That work?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Katie, back to you, please.
Yes, the next item is consideration of authorizing, um, negotiations regarding the intercept agreements that Benzie County EMS has with BLS agencies. Um, this is not to say, uh, we are going to these two agencies with a dollar amount. This is just you giving, uh, administration the authority to sit down with the two agencies and talk through this. Um, we want to make sure that it's fair and equitable for both parties. And so I'm requesting the support from you to negotiate to amend those mutual aid intercept service agreements with both Thompsonville Fire and EMS and Elmira Fire and EMS. If there's further questions regarding those agreements, um, Tom can ask those or Thompsonville is still here as well, uh, to answer any questions they may have.
Yes, my question is, what is the need for the increase?
Tom?
So as our operations, uh, change, um, with Elmira Township kind of going, uh, ALS has kind of changed a little bit of our operational direction. But we've also had the same intercept rate for several years. Um, as long as I've been here for the last eight years, and I think it was the same for many years before that, it hasn't changed. So, uh, these numbers that we're given or tossed out didn't come from me. I didn't have them. I'd have to research, see what accurate numbers are for intercepts. What I can say is that an intercept doesn't change how we operate on an ambulance call. They'll utilize our staff, they'll utilize all our equipment, they're utilizing our ambulances. We're just taking that and jumping in the back of their ambulances. I personally would like to see us have an ad hoc committee to discuss, uh, various operation models and proceeding with, uh, intercepts and mutual aid and stuff and things of that sort. Uh, that can be a future discussion at another time. But we're still using everything that we have on a call and we don't charge the full rate. We get two hundred and fifty dollars out of that thousand, twelve-hundred, fourteen-hundred-dollar ambulance call. We get two hundred and fifty dollars every time we do an intercept. So it actually helps because the BLS agencies bill the entire amount, the entire ALS rate, and they give us whatever portion is agreed upon. Currently, that rate is two hundred and fifty dollars. So it actually helps to subsidize them because if they have an ALS call, they're gonna gen, they're actually gonna be bringing in more money than if they transport BLS calls with intercept agreements. Our call volumes continue to increase. We're also looking at future avenues of how to increase our footprints and increase staffing or coverage, uh, over the next one to two years, which was part of my, uh, short midterm, uh, goals for Benzie County EMS. And making sure that we're in alignment with other surrounding agencies and what we're charging. Two fifty is it and two fifty fit, three hundred is it and three hundred is it? Um, I do feel with some degree of confidence that some of the other agencies, uh, are charging other agencies a much higher amount for intercepts. And I'm not gonna speculate to that, it's all hearsay.
Yeah, true. What come Frankfurt wasn't?
Uh, they don't have a transporting ambulance, we don't do intercepts.
It's just Thompsonville and Elmira.
That's the only two we deal with?
Yeah, they're just, uh, the fire departments are otherwise, uh, medical first responders.
Non-transport.
They're not transport.
They don't transport, but they still show up.
Yeah.
BLS, correct?
But it's different.
No, they, they, they show up as it.
Trying to make this confusing.
Yeah. So essentially, in a nutshell, you have three levels of EMS. You have medical first responder, you have basic life support and advanced life support. Benzie County EMS is up here, it's what the taxpayers wanted, it's what we provide and offer and continue.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, basic life support is not to be undermined or anything, they just can't do quite as much. Medical first responders essentially are non-transporting. They go to the scene, I'm just gonna give you a bare bones, meat and potatoes, they go to the scene, they help give oxygen, they take their blood pressure and things like that, and then generally give a report to the ambulance that's coming to that scene.
Well, I think what scared everybody is they saw a thousand cent increase.
Sure.
And Larry wasn't there, but I guess it did kind of in the motion, so, uh, and who's gonna negotiate this, you?
Well, I-
Our office with-
Your office. Just.
We'd happen-
I'd have a panic too if somebody took me, someone were gonna double your bill and I'd say, well, look, somebody else, so anyway.
Well, and to be clear, the memo was just giving, you know, context, it wasn't saying that Thompsonville or Elmira is gonna be five hundred or a thousand or whatever, well, whatever. It's context, and so the idea of negotiations is you start from where we're at and we talk through that, and what does that look like?
Oh, it's, we need to bring everybody in, I mean.
Yeah.
And we'd be happy to have a commissioner as part of that, if that's the wish of this commission.
I look over to, um, anything. Okay, um.
And once those negotiations are, are ready to make a recommendation, that comes back to us anyway, right?
Yeah.
I think it's important to have the discussions.
Absolutely.
I mean, um, and we do definitely want to support our partners.
Right, right.
Because, you know, I, I know.
There has to be a balance.
The, the BLS agencies are a vital part of the EMS as a whole in the county.
What's your pleasure?
Well, I'll make the motion the Board of Commissioners authorizes negotiations to amend current mutual aid intercept service agreements with Thompsonville Fire and EMS and Elmira Fire and EMS. The proposed changes to be approved by the Board of Commissioners and respective township boards.
Roll off support.
Additional comments or questions?
Are we gonna assign a commissioner? Those discussions?
I don't want to.
Is that the choice of the board?
I heard it mentioned, so I didn't know if we should have that conversation now.
This is horrible, Katie, if this is her.
I'm happy to have one of you in that meeting.
Someone wanna volunteer?
Christie's not here, so.
Well, there's an option.
She is watching though.
Oh, sorry, Christie.
I mean, Tim would be the obvious, but he's already declined, so.
What do you mean, he already declined?
I don't wanna get it all that way.
Oh.
Gary, it is?
Great. I always get accused of doing too much or being out too much anyway, so. I guess.
Gary's, Gary does a lot of these kind of things. Is anybody else wanna jump in?
Nope.
Thank you, Gary.
Can you get Tammy to do it?
All right, let's call for the vote.
Uh, Janat?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll off?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Back to you, Katie.
Uh, uh, the next item on your agenda is to accept the secondary road patrol grant agreement and, um, application for the grant. A secondary road patrol is funding that is provided to, uh, Benzie County Sheriff's Office for road deputies, um, specifically one deputy in our case this year. Uh, so the grant is, uh, up, just a couple of thousand dollars from the previous year from the state of Michigan. And what is in front of you today is to, uh, accept that grant and authorize that agreement so those funds can be utilized to support, um, Deputy Mitchell Smith.
This is just normal.
This is fairly housekeeping, yes, it's the same every year.
That the board authorizes the twenty-five, twenty-six secondary road patrol grant application from the Accident Prevention Program and related agreement to accept funding, authorizing the chair to sign.
Nye seconds.
Thank you. There's no additional questions? Uh, call for the vote, please.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll off?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
And Janat?
Yes. Okay. Last item under new business is to accept the resignation, Dave Davis. He provided it to us in re, in, uh, written form for personal reasons, and I'd entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Mark will support.
Okay. Uh, let's go for the question.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll off?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, committee appointments, uh, we have three committees, that looks like we need to do interviews for. Um, under Parks and Rec, I believe that we have, we need to have two people for that.
No, three commissioners.
Okay.
This is a brand new one, so we're establishing this new commission.
There must be two, oh, two openings.
Three openings as well.
Okay, all right, so anyway, we need three commissioners.
I should say three expiring terms.
But we, we need three commissioners for that then, I thought that was a vacancy created.
No, they're expiring at the end of this year, so we're trying to get a head start, so there's not a lapse.
Hey, well, I need three volunteers.
Oh.
Christie's not here, there you go, there's one.
I, I can find some time to do it.
Thank you, Tim.
I suspect you're gonna do this too, right, Art?
And if I can find two others.
Is it really pulling teeth today?
I, I mean, I expect, I expect at least two of them to.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a committee to, for one, you know, opening, essentially, should this play out the way I think it's going to, correct?
Well, we do have applicants on file, so, um, it doesn't mean everyone's just carte blanche reappointed.
Have those, have those applicants been interviewed already?
Nope.
Okay, all right, I'll volunteer if.
Thank you, Rhonda. Bob, how about you?
There's already three for that committee, correct?
I thought Christie was gonna be on it.
Well, Christie's not here to accept.
Uh, given one of the applicants is, um, Bob's daughter-in-law, he shouldn't be on that committee.
Oh. Okay, we'll get, we'll get him on some.
I, I'm on Parks and Rec, so I guess. Save Christie.
All right, well, Christie, if you're listening in, you have just been drafted. All right, so the members for that committee would be Tim, Rhonda, and Christie. I don't believe that requires any formal action, does it?
Yeah, there's a motion in your packet.
I'll make the motion that the Board of Commissioners establishes an ad hoc interview committee to make a recommendation regarding three terms in the Park and Recreation Commission. Terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and that Commissioner's Markey, Nye, and Trigg. Minister Designee and Charles Kraus, Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, be appointed to such committee.
Court?
Call for the vote?
Roll offs?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Motion carried. Great. The next item in your agenda is regarding the EDCBRA ad hoc. This was previously established, and given the recent resignation, I do need a third commissioner, uh, to serve on this ad hoc.
Looks like an art job to me.
Well, I'm worried.
He's already have.
Art and Christie.
Art and Christie?
Yep, I need a third commissioner.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Art, and, uh, and Chris.
Someone like to make the motion?
Am I on the right one? Can't nominate myself.
I'll read it, that the Board of Commissioners appoints Commissioner Nye to the ad hoc interview committee regarding, uh, EDC and the Brownfield Rural Development Authority, previously established September ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Let's call for the vote.
We gotta have a second.
Oh, we didn't get one yet?
A second.
Okay.
You're second, okay.
Rhonda's seconded, now we'll call for the vote.
Okay. Sauer?
Yes.
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yeah.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll offs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we're doing equalization interviews. And we have an opening with, uh, Commissioner Davis's resignation for that interview, which is coming up pretty doggone quick.
Yes, so, um, this is for two, this is two-part, uh, this is for equalization in general. As you know, we are headed down two paths at the moment. We have published an RFE as well as recruited for director. Uh, to date, we have received one RFE and, um, proposal, and we've received one application for director. Uh, according to the published RFE, we will be opening those bids tomorrow and then interviewing on Friday, the applicant. This committee, um, as many of you as I can being part of that is the hope. And then this committee will make the recommendation forward to the board as to which path we're taking.
I do have to note, I will not be in town on Friday.
Correct, yep, so this creates an issue.
I'm available if needed.
Bob?
How many do you need? You, you just need one?
So we just need-
We need two now.
-to replace Davis, but if Rhonda's gone as well, we need two.
See what's going on Friday.
Gary, you haven't volunteered this morning yet.
I know.
Well, and Gary, aren't you, um?
Benzie, or, uh, Leslie asked me to sit in on this.
So what?
And I'm not sure if I'm gonna be back in time. Merz conference.
At twelve-thirty, what time's it done on Friday?
Twelve-fifteen.
This can't happen the following week, this has to happen on Friday.
Well, we're trying to move this along as quickly as possible, but if we have to reschedule, we could try.
Tim's checking his schedule right now.
We have a special meeting Friday, too.
Yes.
Right, too.
That's at two o'clock.
Right, so this is at twelve-thirty, and then we'd go into the special meeting when it was done.
I can get here when I get here, if that that help or not, probably not.
Well, I, yeah, Friday I can do.
Would you like to come at twelve-thirty?
No, but I can, thank you, Tim.
And Art is on your schedule, correct?
Yep.
So Art and Tim, is there? We can just-
We've got, no, Bob's, Bob's volunteered.
And Bob's coming too, on Friday at twelve-thirty, Bob. But then also tomorrow at eleven AM.
Well, there's two of them?
Well, that's the bid opening. But you don't have to be present, you don't have to be present for that. Leslie and I will open that two oh six, but then we'll send them to you for review.
Yeah.
But there, there are deep ramifications in this, whether we take on an employee or wheth, whether we contract for these services. So this is gonna, this is a big decision.
Yes, it is.
It comes back to the board.
Yes. Definitely, yes, because under statute, you have to appoint the equalization director of record. Um, we have a resolution that best, bestows the management duties onto me of that position, but under law, you make that appointment, that's your, um, that's your authority. Um, I've had numerous conversations with various folks at the state level. They're all proponents of employees, not necessarily contracting. Um, so we'll have to work through that as an ad hoc to decide what's best for Benzie County.
That's interesting.
So tomorrow's meeting?
So tomorrow is just the bid opening, and so with a bid opening, we open it and we'll do it in two oh six at eleven AM, we'll open the bids, we'll record who the bids are from, the amount of money that they're for, and then that's it. Um, there's no awarding, there's no discussion necessarily, uh, when we have the ad hoc, we can discuss those.
Just have Art stop at noon.
That's fine, at this point, only have one, so it's gonna be quick.
Yeah, I saw, yeah, I can, I can be there.
But we don't have to be there for the bid opening. Can you make all the commissioners aware of where they came in at? Is there anything that prevents you from doing that?
No.
Why, why don't we just do that, have you and Leslie open the bids and then provide the information?
I can do that, scan it.
Oh, then I won't be here then.
Very good.
So is there an issue with me coming in late Friday? For this? You know, we only have four commissioners.
We've got Bob and Tim, we've got, Bob and Tim have agreed to.
Then I just.
You're good.
Thank you.
Okay, good, I appreciate you guys.
And we just need the motion.
Yeah, we need a motion, though.
You'll have to conaggle a new one.
Well, it's easy to do.
Thought that's what Tammy was here for.
Make the motion that the Board of Commissioners appoints Commissioner Rolloff and Markey to the Ad hoc Committee Regarding Equalization Department, briefly established on September ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
Nine seconds.
Thank you. There's no other discussion, we'll call for the question?
You're not?
Yes.
Markey?
Yes.
Nye?
Yes.
Roll off?
Roloff?
Yes.
Sauer?
Yes.
Alright, very good.
It's been.
The question is, are we gonna set interview dates for interviewing applicants for the open, uh, commissioner?
We have set aside. I had placed two dates on everyone's calendar as tentative. Um, one being the twenty-first, starting at nine-thirty A M. The other one being the twenty-fourth, starting at ten A M. Um, based on my calendar, everyone has accepted the Friday date. And one person declined the Tuesday date, and it won't tell me who.
Well, that would have been me.
Oh, okay. You declined the Tuesday date?
No, I'm sorry, I did put it on, no, I had to decline it, right.
Okay, so if that's the case, then Friday, the twenty-fourth, starting at ten A M, would be the interviews.
Um, depending on the number of candidates, I will have to leave at two fifteen. So is there any way we can back that up to nine if we do get a, a certain number of candidates? I assume, I mean, if we have four or five, aren't they forty-five minutes apiece, the interviews, at least?
Yeah, I think to date, though, we've only gotten one.
Okay, we had no mail yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's Columbus Day, so.
So, I just, I want.
Either way.
Okay. I mean, ten's fine unless we start getting.
I have an issue with nine. I have things I have to do earlier in the day.
And we have a twelve-thirty as well.
On.
It's a twelve-thirty.
No, that's next, that's different Friday, buddy.
You're Friday off.
So we're looking at booking times, starting at ten A M on Friday, the twenty-fourth. So the one that was tentative for Tuesday is off.
Yep, I'll remove that from your calendars now.
Alright. So a special meeting we called at ten A M on the twenty-fourth.
Correct.
For the purpose of interviewing candidates.
Correct. And I assume that you would like to do it the same as before, um, list of questions, round robin?
Thanks, Tammy. If there's nothing else on that subject, why don't we move into, uh, Commissioner Reports? Bear with me. Rhonda, we start with you this time.
Hold on. Okay, um, thank you. Well, several of us attended, um, the MAC Conference. There were a couple of presentations that were quite interesting. One was undercover in the CIA, gentleman James Olson had served for thirty-one years. He told his story, how it impacted his family, uh, very proud to serve in that way. We had another, uh, presentation, the power of memory. Um, this man was renowned, Paul Mellor was renowned for being able to recall names of people and numbers in, um, really kind of ridiculous sequences, so. Um, and then, um, a lunch session was Elizabeth Hertel, who is a Director of M D H H S. Um, she talked about the changes in Medicaid and Medicare, um, but the biggest question that was asked when she was up there and she opened the floor was, uh, regarding the P I H P bid out, which she promptly responded she could not comment on due to pending litigation. There were several breakout sessions. I attended, um, the community, the impact of Medicaid changes in Michigan. The community mental health system redesign that was put on by Alan Bolter, talking about should this P I H P bid out happen? The, uh, ramifications to counties and local governments, um, was thoroughly discussed, and there will be many. Um, the other breakout session I attended was who own, who, who owns Michigan and why does it matter? This was put on by the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy, and, um, it was basically implementing tools for meaningful policies. They basically have mapped out ownership of, of our whole country. Um, she would put sample cities up on the screen, and she could tell you how many of the residences were owner occupied, corporate owned, um, have out-of-state owners, non-corporate owned. Um, and these have ramifications for your neighborhoods, your communities, and really, it, it, a lot of, um, places have utilized their tools to decide what policies they could keep in place to, you know, make sure their bonds pass in the future. Make sure their schools are supported, make sure, it, it was pretty interesting. Um, they didn't throw Benzy County up there, but there was a local one. Wasn't there one in Michigan, Katie? You were in that breakout session with me.
I think so.
And it was hugely owned by overseas companies.
It was a U P, uh, county that was like, the public land was eighty percent owned by like Singapore or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was quite interesting. Crazy number, all owned by Singapore.
Overall, between the last two MAC Conferences, the big difference was in the legislative MAC Conference that we attended. We all saw all the breakout sessions. We stayed in one room, and all the information was shared with everybody. This format went back to, here's your menu, each breakout session, you get to choose from four. If you're interested in anything else, we'll throw the videos online if you wanna look at them. I gotta say, I kind of preferred seeing everything. I know people didn't really like sitting in one place all day long, but, um, I did like being able to see everything. It's hard to choose when you're interested in more than one topic, so that's my two cents, in case you're listening, Mac, so. Um, I attended the pers- our first Personnel Committee meeting. Did we address that as far as?
Yes, it's already sent out.
Okay. Okay, um, we did our first consideration or deliberation on a step-three grievance, which was regarding the use of comp ti- comp time for time off. We started our discussion of payment and lieu, and we decided that what we were going to do is homework, because we do have time on our side for this decision, was to do research. And we're going to look at all our county entities, which are Central Wellness, the Health Department, the Maples, Road Commission, Senior Resources, Benzy Bus. Do they offer payment and lieu? Um, if they offer it, what percentage do they use? And then we were going to look at other municipal entities as well. This is inter- information gathering. Um, I even reached out, I've started reaching out to some private entities, which we would have to have the discussion. Is that apples and apples? Is that information that's gonna be important to our discussion? Or not really, or should that information not be in the mix? Um, we'll toss that around in that committee before we bring it back to you. I attended both the Central Wellness Executive Board Meeting and the regular Board Meeting. Um, the P I H P bid out, of course, was a huge topic for both. There was a hearing, uh, several counties filed an injunctive for injunctive relief with, um, for a hearing that was heard last week. There was an A M session and a P M session. I listened to it in its entirety. If you're interested in deeply understanding what this is, go to YouTube, look up P I H P versus the State of Michigan. There's two sections on it, the A M session, the P M session, and, um, it will give you the history, the details, the, the, these counties are looking for injunctive relief from the P I H P bid out. And we are expecting a ruling yesterday, basically, and this ruling will set precedent, I believe, for how this issue is gonna move forward. Um, the other big topic at our board meeting was the N M R E report, where Northern Lakes, who has, um, been notorious for not paying into I S F funds, but reaping the rewards of funding when they fall short, um, year after year after year. Our board had supported a letter and a resolution being sent to the N M R E, letting them know that our board felt that the Northern Lakes should be held accountable for what they had done. Audits were put in place and moving forward. Apparently, the auditors for Northern Lakes had misplaced two years. And Northern Lakes basically came to the N R M, N M R E and said, look, we don't have this data. It would cost fifty thousand dollars to recreate, to find it, to move forward with those two years. So we would like those three million dollars to be forgiven. And that got approved. Um, we have three representatives from our board on the N M R E. One voted no, one was not present, and one voted yes. So at the end of that meeting, it was decided that another letter be sent saying, no, now we would really like you to be held accountable, um, after this forgiveness. It, it's a little bit problematic, but, um, I'll let Tim speak to it more if he'd like to at his report. He's, okay, um. I attended the Village of Benzonia. Resident came forward, he would like an unused platted road vacated or a village road put in, so he can build some houses. The pedestrian signs down U S thirty-one that are, the purpose is to slow down traffic going past the roadhouse there, where people cross all the time, hit some permitting issues. They were out for one day. Um, so they're gonna try and rectify that, and they are also, and they also needed to, um, communicate a little better with the Sheriff's Department about what they were doing. And they also have flashing lights at the top of the hill that are gonna be put in there to try and slow things down. Um, I attended the Water Smart Land Use Committee. They were discussing an all-partner meeting, which is gonna happen on ten twenty-three at the Mills Community House from one to four. The Cooligo, Coligo project was discussed. Um, it isn't the same project as Housing North, which is a Housing Atlas project, and, um, so they talked about both those meetings and the project, how they're moving forward with those. I attended Benzonia Township meeting. Um, the forla- forerunner lawsuit was discussed. There is some concern about the superintendent, um, being the one that's receiving and providing information with the attorneys when the whole board is the client and should be made aware of what's going on every step of the way. They approved a ten thousand dollar contribution for the Nonpoint Source Grant in Beulah. Uh, it was noted at this meeting that the sediment basin cleaning is not happening this year. They noted that Malino Road, uh, was paved by the Road Commission without permission. And they had, they said they had been hired by Crystal Lake to pave part of Malino Road, but went into Benzonia Township's portion of Malino Road, and then requested that twenty-four thousand dollar payment be made, which was approved. Um, the building sale in the Township of Benzonia, the Conservation District, had offered three hundred and twenty-five thousand. They based that on appraisal they had received. The township asked for an appraisal that came in at three hundred and forty-five thousand, although they are listed at over fi- a little bit over five hundred thousand, I believe. The board decided at this meeting to count, counter the offer of three hundred and twenty-five thousand at three hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred to include the price of their appraisal. Um, this is lower than they had hoped for to offset costs of the new building. Um, the sale of the new building is problematic because it's an undersized septic system. So a lot of people wanting to purchase it have needs that the septic system can't support. There is an open house on Benzonia Township's new building on Octo- October twenty-fourth from three to six. Um, I just wanna note, I also attended the Parks and Rec Public Information Meeting. Uh, while there was significant support, there were also concerns about protections of the nature there. And, um, a big topic was maintenance costs and how those will be covered. That's all I have.
Questions for Rhonda to report? If not, I just forwarded to the Commissioners, uh, Christie's very extensive report. She did text me this morning and ask, if nothing else, focus on her comments regarding, uh, her attendance at the Materials Management Group. Gary?
You can read most of mine. I sat through a discussion with Yarrow Brown, Commissioner Janat, and she wants to come to this board, I guess, to, uh, discuss possible options for housing in the future, so it was, it was a good, good, good time. Um, the MAC Conference, uh, same thing that Rhonda talked about. I did attend the A I Power thing, and that one, to me, really worries me. And just, just from what they said, there's basically very little guarantee how your records and stuff are gonna be secured, or what can happen or can't happen. Anyway, that's my take. I sat through an invent, employee benefit package. Uh, yeah, I can't remember who put that one on, but, uh, one of the things that really resonated with me was they suggest you do an audit of your employees. Find out, do you have people on these health plans that shouldn't be on these health plan? Some of the kids that never got taken off. To me, it made sense. I don't know what kind of savings you could find, but as this stuff continues to skyrocket, you need to really look carefully at what's going on. I think Road Commission, last time I was there, they were talking about a nineteen percent increase in that, too. And their employees, employees pay some, not much, but this has gotta end. This can't continue. I don't know how, how it's gonna, anyway. The one I wish I'd went to, and maybe Tim went to, was, um, oh, the, uh, with the A I, the, uh, how they were gonna do, build these information centers and.
Oh, data centers.
Data centers. I wish I'd went to that. It wasn't quick enough to get, I would have liked to seen that, but I had tired butt setting through the last one on it. Sitting there all day. It was nice, you did get a smattering of everything, but anyway. Good, good conference. I thought it was very good. Um, went to Blaine Township. We've got a little neighbor dispute going on there. Leave that one go. Parks and Rec, the public hearing. The one thing that really stuck out to me was, we need a solid plan for the future. Maintain this arc, and where is the funding coming from? You can't just, the grants cover the cost to do it, but it doesn't cover the maintenance. There's a lot of things I wish engineers would come up with. This is basically what it's gonna cost you a year to maintain. I'm not sure Benzy County can afford the Parks and Rec Department and a, and a manager, so, uh, that stuck with me more than anything that was said that day. And, uh, I know a lot of people are in favor, favor of it, I think. There was, I kinda tried to do a fifty-fifty split, but I think majority of them are in favor of some development there. They're just not in favor of how it's portrayed right now, but are they in favor of putting more money into it to maintain these things, um, so, see where that goes. Went to Thompsonville last night, uh, Chuck, Chuck Kraus talked about to do with it. There we go. There's someone. Talked about some of the issues they're facing with the development that they're doing there at the Diamond Crossing. And right now, they're kinda held up by, you know I have it in here. They're held up by, uh, permit issuance for from the Health Department. They can't move forward without it here now. Can't really move forward until they get the septic permit. And what's holding them up is the fact that as long as you're Thompsonville, never never got a licenser, uh, thing from Eagle above their campground. They were gonna connect with this, so they, the TARP group is in favor of increasing the size of the septic system to accommodate it. But they would like to be able to move forward now. Whether the, the village does it or doesn't do it, that's a different story. But they would like to, they would, if things would work out, they would get the footings in this year and start working on the building. Septic system can go in later, but they're, they're in agreement to increase the size, which could cost them thirty percent more, fifteen, possibly fifteen thousand dollars more to do this. The good news was the grant they had, and I, no idea, I didn't write the numbers down quick enough. It's three hundred and some thousand dollars. And through a little negotiations, they. And through a little negotiations, they were able to increase that grant to over four hundred and twenty or four hundred and thirty thousand. So they do have the coverage and they have a lot of donations, so. It's a project that the community's in favor of. And the last thing that Thompsonville did last night, they renegotiated their insurance. They had been using. And their bill for the fire department and ambulance in the village was fifty-six thousand dollars. And through this other group, they dropped it to about forty-four, still seems huge to me, but. Uh so I, effective on eleven-one, they're going to this other company and. Yeah, it works out, must have a lot more buildings than I am. That's what I got, thanks.
Any questions for Gary? I did the Personnel Committee, Rhonda already covered that rather well. Central Wellness is a community service and relations. We had a presentation from Megan Helmadot. She works at Central Wellness's Children's Division. And she gave us a survey on their services they do for childrens. Had a SafeNet survey, you know, SafeNet's in, is in the schools and uh. Very, very positive results on the survey. Parent guardians either strongly agree or agree that they're doing a good job. And that they're effective and the school staff strongly agree or agree. Only like one point six percent disagree. And also gave us a, a prevention services and hospitalization trends for children. Benzy Manastee is greatly under the state average. For pupils that require hospitalization for mental issues for, for kids. So the, it's the preventative, it's to highlight that the preventative is actually working. Having, having services in the schools, people working with the kids. Attended the MAC Conference, um I did the uh PIHP bid out with Alan Volter. And the Michigan Association of, Community Mental Health Association of Michigan, that was very interesting. On the PIHP bid out. And looking, I haven't seen the response yet from that court case last Thursday. I do believe the court case that Central Wellness Network. Is being filed or has been filed, I don't know if it, but it's central, it's all the CMHs in the region. Under the Northern Michigan Regional Entity and Manastee County also signed on for that as well. I attended that AI Power. AI is a, can be a wonderful thing. But it scares the bejesus out of me, I have an IT background. We gotta be careful how we use it. That's, no one to go in depth. I got to attend the. Animals, Regional Animal Shelter meeting, kickoff meeting with Grand Travers County. Katie and Leslie were there, Kyle Mauer, and the Benzy Animal Welfare League was there as well. Plus some of our volunteers from the shelter. Uh we met with the Grand Travers County Animal Control Committee. Was there other people there too, Katie?
Just representatives of their staff from the Health Department and Administration.
Okay, um very good, uh initial kickoff meeting, um discussed current needs, uh we discussed for future needs. Potential locations, we're looking for more locations just so we don't blinders on and just use one. I was left with the impression that Grand Travers County is eager to move forward with. That we are looking to move forward with. Then the Homestead Township Board Meeting, um that the big thing from their, their. Website vendor that they use is changing platforms, so they're gonna have to go and redo their website, which is not a bad thing. They're going to an easier platform to manage. Would make it easier for the staff and Homestead Township to actually update the websites themselves without having to, have someone give them a hand. The Central Wellness uh Board Meeting, um as Rhonda covered, we did discuss the bid out process rather in depth. Um I will add on about the, the NMR's. I guess uh motion to settle with Northern Lakes without including those two years. Being audited, I think it was two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. I don't think everybody understands that. Since Northern Lakes joined the region. They have this contingency fund and it's called the Internal Services Fund. Northern Lakes has never contributed to this fund, they've only taken from it. And you think, well, okay, but it's all the other CMHs that have contributed to this fund. That allowed Northern Lakes to take. But basically, you say, well, Northern Lakes is their own entity, they're doing their own thing. But they're taking resources away from all the other CMH, that's the biggest problem that I see. I mean, not only does it give other CMHs a. A bad look because, oh, this CMH is not providing the services, they're doing things. Like I, I guess they were truffling Medicaid funds around that probably shouldn't have been done. So that gives the state ammunition saying, oh, we need to privatize the CMHs. But they're also taking away potential access for us to be able to go, let's say, Central Wellness, we were short one year. Well, maybe that Internal Services Fund is now empty because Northern Lakes has already drained it. That would not allow then Central Wellness to then draw from it, even though we've been putting into it the last, since two thousand fourteen. I'll leave that at that, um. I did attend the Benzy Senior Resources Soup Night, I got to hang out with the sheriff, that was, and, and Judge Mead. Very well attended, I mean, they had a line going for. Over an hour, I mean, it just. I mean, they had us two chefs the first hour, there was still a line going down to another room. Did you stay after I, I left Sheriff? Very well attended, lot of fun. The Village of Honor Council Meeting um last night, um they're almost done with the initial phase of their new playground. And the CIA, the Corridor Improvement Authority, is having their first meeting, I think it's today. Four o'clock at the Village Hall. One last thing, um that is a commissioner, but I did go to the Cherry Bowl Drive-In Prunker Treat on Saturday.
That's fun.
So you were one of those cars.
That thing was, I mean, Cory was there, when we were setting up. I'm looking out, my understanding that the cars wrapped around, went up US thirty-one, all the way past Indian Hill.
They were past the bridge, we drove by them.
Oh, really?
Very popular.
It was, I must say, awesome. You ever get, you should, just go and watch the kids with their costumes and stuff, it's a blast.
Am I bringing any candy?
I gave out, I came prepared, Cory was prepared as well. I ended up, I bought ten bags of candy from Sam's Club, been over two hundred bucks. I still had like, only like about two bags left, so. It, it was a lot of fun.
Good, good report, other questions or comments for Tim? Um I do want to acknowledge the fact that at the eleventh hour, I asked you to participate in that discussion on animal shelter up in Travers. Thanks for making that happen.
It was interesting.
Thanks, um and I'll just follow up with Tim on animal control a little bit, I did have a conversation with the. Grand Travers County Board Chair and they're looking forward to possibly. Joining in and see what we can do to make, make this happen with, in a shared animal control, so. Just from being around, is one of the employees of Grand Travers County Animal Control used to be a Benzy County Animal Control Officer. I attended some of the same stuff Gary did at the MAC Conference. Uh area agency on aging, they struggle still, um getting enough manpower as far as in the field and um. Registered nurses, I have a niece that works for the AAA, so. That's a struggle sometimes, but they're, they're able to cover everything, but they're, they're still having to work a little bit extra. Veterans Affairs yesterday, welcome Gary Sellers, a new member. Getting ready for Veterans Day, which is right around the corner, November eleventh, at Veterans Memorial at noon. You'll notice a little change, we removed the berm and the bushes that haven't grown worth a crap for the last five years or however long it's been. We're gonna have a different look down there, but right now it's elevated down to the same level as the. As the memorial itself, um we're gonna look at possibly some planted trees. Maybe thirty feet behind, skirting, skirting around just to make a separation between the memorial. And the maintenance building for Benzonia Township. Township Supervisor Jason stopped down, said everything looked great, really appreciative about what we've done and look forward to working with us in the future. We're just trying to do the best we can do for the community as far as. You know, when we built the thing, um we had a pretty good vision and it, and it worked, um but it just is not working, was not working today. So some of the, some of the plants won't grow, stones all over the place, so got rid of that and. We're gonna plant some grass, it's very, it tapers very, very slow back behind the flags now and it can turn right into the grass. And then plant half a dozen trees, maybe five probably. And that's coming from some of the local gals that do some flower work and stuff like that. Mary Hoyt, who most of you know, her husband Phil was on the first Benzy County, I shouldn't say the first, but the first organized. Benzy County Veterans Affairs and Mary's are pretty active in that stuff, so. She said she'd take a look with some of her friends and, and see what they come up with, I have a line and so do a couple of other people. About some tree stuff, planted tree stuff, um between Millarc and Deering's, we hope to be able to get that done. Was in for APs the other day. I, I got us. Thank Rhonda's husband Ken and Vinnie Palazzolo. Ken brought two pieces of equipment down to the memorial, mini excavator and a skid steer. There's no way we could have done, did what we accomplished on Saturday without. All the help, I mean, it was, I brought my dump trailer over so we could haul the debris off, um and put it in an exclusive area. So it worked out great. Village Lake Inn tonight. I did have one question, um. There's a canoe launch area right over by Railroad Point, do I understand that? Why can't they launch kayaks at the canoe rant, at the canoe rant? I mean, kayak's just a smaller canoe, as far as I'm concerned, for one person instead of two.
Might have to do with ADA.
Okay.
Because um. People with disabilities may not be able to do a normal canoe launch like traditionally.
We launched already there.
I understand, same, for kayaks, they, if, if you go down to the um. Is it the, the Flat River Park in Honor, they have a, well, it's already taken out for the year, but they have a, an ADA kayak launch there.
Okay.
You can see what exactly what it probably will look.
Just an observation. As well, Jason Barnard, thirty-six for the Township Open House. Hmm, that's all I have on my list.
Questions or comments for Bob? Bobby, you answered the question for me, I was wondering who handles the maintenance at the veterans park, that sounds like that's all volunteer.
Correct, ninety percent of it.
Just my observation and maybe it's incorrect, but I find it ironic, the people in my value system. The people that we should be taking care of first, get probably the least amount of dollars from the county, but.
That's right.
I appreciate what you guys do.
We're fine.
I provided my report to you guys in advance, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. Gary, you had touched on that uh meeting with Housing North. Actually, what that was for, just to fill in the blanks, was they wanted to talk to us about this mapping program they have for zoning. Um and Rhonda, you said in that also. And yes, they probably will be making a pitch to us at some point in time, it's not really just about housing, but. It's about how this new technology can help developers identify. What they can do and where um on their own. Like three others of you, I sat in on the Parks and Rec uh discussion, um I found it enlightening. Um I don't know if it was solicited and programmed, but I found the majority of the comments being supportive of some. Enhancement at that location and not against. And I look forward to getting more information back from that group as we make our decision. And I just wanna remind everybody that the performance evaluation for administrators due to me. And I'd really appreciate it if I wasn't doing all the inputs at the last minute. So if you could get those back to me, I'd appreciate it. Any questions? Katie?
Yeah, it's just a few things for me, um Tim talked about the animal control, a meeting that we have with Grand Travers County. We left that meeting with marching orders for administration on both sides of the table. We're gonna be working through, looking for other properties that are kind of in the center area. As well as uh just kind of throwing out some spitball numbers and trying to get. At least a somewhat accurate, you know, dollar amount that what we'd be looking for if we were to move forward with any sort of regional approach. So administration is working on that with Grand Travers Administration to just try to put some numbers on paper, cause right now it's been very, you know, visionary. As far as moving forward, everyone around the table seemed generally supportive of animal control in general. We kinda got off on a tangent, talking about, you know, what does this look like in twenty years? And if we're building it now for cats and dogs, should we be thinking about horses and cows and goats and all the things? So we're working through some of that as well, if we're going to have a regional approach, does it make sense to account for some livestock? Cause as you know, Benzy County has had livestock a few times throughout history, and so it's Grand Travers.
Don't mean to interrupt, but I was excited to hear that the Animal Welfare League was at the table, is there a possibility for a public-private? Cooperative effort?
What I gathered from their comments at the meeting um was. They would be there potentially to assist with some fundraising, but not necessarily in any other capacity. You know, they indicated that there's been a lot of turnover at the league with folks, um you know, passing away and just, you know, moving away. And so there's quite a bit of a new regime there, the two individuals that were at the meeting, um the one had just joined the league in the very near. Very recent future or present, I don't know. And then the other one had only been with the league a short time and I've only met her once, and so. They're kind of in a space right now where they, they don't have the capacity to do a lot, um they don't have the volunteers that they used to have. They have some money, but they don't really have folks to do the work anymore, um so. They would be more of like in a fundraising type capacity if anything. The volunteers that were there, they're supportive of everything, right, they're supportive of animal needs as well as finding money and, and those sorts of things. So I think overall it was a great conversation, um there's a lot of excitement from, I think, both sides of the table to at least explore this. Again, it could still, it may not work, um but we're gonna, we all thought it was important enough to at least continue down the road a little bit further to explore it. Uh just a quick update on equalization, although we kind of already covered it. From a state's perspective, we're in good shape, um as you know that there is a pretty rigorous calendar that is put out by the State Tax Commission for equalization. Um and we're in a good, we're in a good spot right now, um I do wanna give huge appreciation to Wexford County. Uh as well as Emmett County and Tony Mayard, who has six or seven counties in Michigan. They've been wonderful to the staff down. Uh, they've been wonderful to the staff down there as well as to me and assisting with reviewing our L forty twenty nines and submitting them through the E. Equalization portal, getting me access to the state portal so we can get everything in there. Um, as well as reviewing the appraisal studies that were done by Dr. Mark Holly, so. Um, they've just been really gracious in assisting us to make sure we don't fall behind. Uh, we're in a, we're in a good spot with the state, everything has been turned in to date that needed to be. Um, the items that are due at the end of this month will be in front of you on October twenty eighth for your support to then submit into the E. Equalization site. And then after that, we have to review the appraisals and get those into the Meg site. Um, but things are looking really good and I'm very appreciative of our neighbors for helping us. Uh, while we navigate this time of figuring out a director slash contracted, um, relationship, so. Uh, but thing, other than that, things are going really well down there. Just a reminder, tomorrow at five thirty PM in this room is a Tax Limitation Advisory Committee meeting. I did send that out as a calendar invite to everyone who's on my distribution list, obviously you don't have to come, but we do live stream those on YouTube as well. Uh, so five thirty tomorrow, and if you can't, um, watch it live, it is on our YouTube channel to view later.
Katie, on that subject, when you sent out that invite.
Uh huh.
I noticed that it said, when you sent it out yesterday.
Uh huh.
It said tomorrow. Meaning today.
Weird.
Yeah, and, and I thought, I looked at it again this morning and I thought, well, does that update itself and I didn't realize it? But take a look at that, okay?
Yeah, it's on my calendar for the fifteenth.
I was looking at your, that invite on the email.
I know, but I sent the invitation through what's on my calendar.
Okay.
That's really weird, tomorrow, the fifteenth at five thirty is the Tax Advisory Committee. Um, uh, Amy was here today to talk about the school and the different things that they're working on. I am part of their stu-, uh, school strategic planning, uh, meetings, I was part of the group of forty community members last week sitting through, um. Talking about the school's priorities, envisioning and goal setting and those sorts of things. Uh, so that's, that's a great group and it's been going really, really well and I'm excited to. See that come forward to you as well as the community in January, February time. Uh, Parks and Rec, we had a public input session, we were very clear when we published that it was a public input session. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission was very good about listening, um, not interrupting and being respectful to folks who needed to speak. Uh, we, we almost had to beg for people to speak in the room, uh, the room was full, but there was. Less than a dozen, I would say, that actually spoke. Um, so those comments were heard, I know that Sean Johnson, Ed Hookterp. And the likes are, you know, considering those comments and working with Spicer to talk through any sort of tweaks or changes. It will come back before the Parks and Recreation Commission and then again to the Board of Commissioners for any, uh, final approval. But based on the conversations that Leslie and I have had with Sean and Ed, they are taking. A lot of what is said into consideration and trying to figure out how to find a compromise, so it didn't fall on deaf ears. Um, I don't want anyone to think that it did, uh, but there is a process, it wasn't, wasn't a town hall session, it wasn't an open house. It was a public input session and that's the reason it was ran the way it was. Um, and then materials management planning, uh, uh, Christie did share that in her report. Um, we're moving forward with that, the contractor is, um, who the region is working with Fishbeck. Uh, we were working with Trudy Gala, Gala, she retired from Leland County, went to Fishback, she's now retired from Fishback. And so Susan Wens, like who many of you know, will now be the point of contact, um, as the consultant for the regional materials management planning. There are surveys that have been sent out and are continuously going to be published for both residents as well as businesses in the region. These surveys ask a various array of questions as far as, um, do you recycle, if you don't recycle, why don't you recycle? Um, if you are a, a, a poller, how much waste do you have and those sorts of things? And the whole idea of these surveys is to gather that data for what it looks like here in the region. But we can formulate a plan going forward to improve, um, diversion of waste in the landfills. So, um, you'll see it on Facebook, they're gonna put it on Facebook. Uh, we will get a link on our website as well, Grand Travers and Leland's website, but that is moving forward well. Other than that, I don't have anything unless you have any questions for me.
Questions for Katie? Katie, just a couple of things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how will the staffing issues at the Treasurer's Office affect you and your staff?
Um, we will fill in wherever we can, uh, with Kelly, our office probably is one of the closer offices with the Treasurer in the sense of a. Payables and payroll and banking, um, so it'll be a little extra lift to assist her, but we're happy to do that. Uh, I will make myself available as will Kelly and Carissa.
Should we anticipate some overtime from your staff in order to help?
Well, Chris is the only one, um, entitled to overtime in our office and so we will give her the option, but if she's unable to, um. Take on overtime or she doesn't want to, Leslie and I will step in.
Okay, good.
And on Friday, we're meeting with the tribe.
Correct.
Is there any special instructions for us regarding that meeting?
Um, I don't think so, we'll, we'll run it as a special meeting, they called the meeting, um. And this is really an open-ended conversation, I would encourage everyone to just, you know, be respectful. Uh, the native culture is sometimes very different than, um, our culture, our, I don't know how to pronounce, say it. Our culture, uh, but so just be mindful of that. Um, and our office will work to, you know, set up the room and hopefully have some name placards in place to just try to make it, you know, inviting and formal. Um, and we'll also get some refreshments as well.
So i- in the setup of the room, we'll have it so that they're not sitting in an audience.
Yes.
Right?
I'm gonna try to figure out almost like a circle, like how we did the town hall. Um, their board is not huge, it's about the same size as yours, so we'll try to figure out how to make it, you know, kind of like a round, a round table.
Like when the AG was here.
Yeah.
That was not.
Something like that.
Yeah.
And we know who's in attendance Friday?
Yes, so, um, they have the folks on their website listed, my understanding is their whole board is coming as well as an, um, an admin staff. And then for our purposes, it's, uh, six, oh, five of you.
Um, is it, is there anybody not able to make it, I know Rhonda, you can't, but.
I think just.
Is everybody else planning on being here?
I'm up in here, it's close.
Okay, alright.
And then Tammy and I will be here.
Those, those name placements would be very helpful. And I'm gonna just echo what you said, um, we have an opportunity, uh, to have a real partnership as they. Increase their presence in Benzy County. In addition to that, I think they, it's been spectacular, even though it's mandated the two percent grant opportunities. Bob made me aware of the importance of that a few years ago and I know that a number of you have attended that. And it gives you a sense of what their customs look like. Uh, but if you go to their website, it will give you great insight as to. Um, s- a, a feel for what their culture is all about. Cause we, I def- I wanna make sure that we're respectful of that within reason, we're respectful of that. Very good, anything else? Um. We are at, uh. Correspondence is in your binder, uh, we're at the last public comment.
I'm Annie Browning from Thirty Grove Place in Frankfurt and I was just. Updating you because I've spoken to you over the years about my experience with domestic violence, so. We're today, right now, where it is, and I mentioned this to you before. The person who committed crimes against me, Josh Streeter, he committed another crime against another woman after he got out, and so. That case is now being dealt with and I actually went to the sentencing for that, uh, last week. And it was really jarring still after all these years, um, and I was texting, I was sitting in the parking lot when I pulled in and I was texting. The woman, Amy is her name, she said Josh is in the parking lot too, and I was like. This is really weird, why am I sitting in a parking lot, it's really uncomfortable, so I just came into the government center, I was like, I feel comfortable in the government center, so thank you for being a. Like, a safe place. Um, anyway, so he, I expressed concern before that. He was gonna get hit with slap on the wrist, I'm so glad to say that I don't feel like he was hit with another slap on the wrist, first, I feel like. Um, so he had, uh, he was charged with another crime because he didn't, um. Abide by the rules or the laws of being on bond and he didn't provide an address where he was staying and so. I mean, it's, they're piling up and actually this set, so as a result, the sentencing for the crime that he committed against another woman. Was postponed, so it's gonna happen again, so anyway, my point is that. I'm so glad to say that Benzy County is not welcoming for people who commit domestic violence, so anyway, thank you for all your parts in that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Good move for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Hey.
Alright.
Any opposed?
Yeah, me.